Everybody got quiet and make me nervous. We'll call this meeting and we'll have Board of Commissioners order, and we'd like to welcome everybody. Just so there's no confusion, if anybody here wants to speak under public comment, legally we did that at our last meeting, which was a week ago, but I've talked to our county attorney and our manager, and we're gonna open that back up tonight, even though I guess legally we don't have to, because it was sort of understood by most folks that our meeting's gonna be continued, and tonight will be the bulk of the meeting. So, does anyone want to speak in the public session? And if you do, just see Mr. Framel back there in the back, and give him your name in the next couple of minutes, and we'll make sure that you are heard. Anyway, welcome, glad you're here. We've got a good agenda planned tonight, and hope we do some good things. Announcements, we have any announcements, Mr. Manager?
Well, you know it's a new place up here, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, dear.
Mr. Deckers incapacitated his second, so we commandeered the services of this young lady here, Teresa McDowell, many of you may know her, and so she'll be helping us with our appointment.
Teresa McDowell, she's very young, she's not in school.
Yeah, I understand. She'll be keeping up with the rest of us.
Teresa talked to me today, and she said, "What do I need to know about the meeting tonight?" And I said that you may be here till midnight. And talk slow, so she can understand what we're doing, so.
For general, we'll let her know.
Thank you, Teresa.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Hayes, any announcements on your end?
No, sir.
Commissioner Beal, Governor, Tate, Lord, or Mr. Attorney. With that said, I'm sure all of us have got a lot of our minds, and I say this from time to time, as we observe this moment in silence, I would ask each of you to try to remove things from your minds, not be a hindrance to clear thinking tonight, and we'll take that time out of just standing and getting prepared mentally for our meeting. So stand, join us in moments. Thank you. Commissioner Peppers is gonna lead us into the face of the law.
... consider flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which sustains one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Robbie, do we have anybody sign up for public comment?
No, sir.
And does anyone wish to speak, since it wasn't clear that we were gonna do that tonight? Under new business, let's see, we've already done that. The public hearing, Mr. Attorney, I guess we need to call ourselves into the hearing, so we will declare the hearing open at this time to consider amendments to and reinstatement of Chapter 155 of Macon County Code concerning voluntary farmland preservation. So that hearing is now open. Do we have anyone sign up to speak to that? Mr. Framel?
Yes, sir. Did not. Soil conservation supervisor, Mr. Beal, Chairman is here, if anyone has any questions, Mr. Beal, if you've read the plans, that county attorney has reviewed the ordinance, and provided ordinance, Mr. Beal has read the ordinance, and I think everybody agrees that's what we're looking for, what you want to come up and speak to him, like every time.
And I hope everyone got the email our attorney went through, and at our request, he went through and highlighted anything that was a change from the past to this one. I believe the board reached in the past, it passes in 1997, that's been about 15 years ago, close to 15 years ago. So Chester sent that by email, which one of you had requested you receive then.
Okay. And I think Mike will follow up. Mr. Chairman, we did at our meeting at the Soil Conservation Office, a lot of folks were excited about the changes in the farmland preservation ordinance, got more attitude, there's more and more people are getting into it. Mike, if you want to speak to that, Mr. Beal.
Well, it's like Mr. Corbin was saying, the original passed in 97, farmland preservation ordinance, it's all voluntary, don't have to get in if you don't want to. The major change was originally when the ordinance was adopted, they opted to, and it was state law that you had to go by the present use value, five acres of cattle, 10 acres of wood, yeah, and banking, and then 20 acres of forest land. Well, our board, our voluntary ag district board met and wanted to drop that to an acre, so we can include tailgate parky folks and folks that are doing intense farming, which a lot of folks are making good money off an acre of land, you know, and blueberries, strawberries, things like that. And we hope, if we, if y'all pass on this, we hope, and we've been working with Tommy Jenkins, our hope is within the next year or so, we can make everybody aware in Macon County just how much farming does contribute to the county and how important it is. Basically, like I said, the big change is the, we dropped the requirement, you've got to be farming an acre, you've got to bring a three years' worth of fields that show that it has been farmed in the past, and that's what it's taking out.
Gentlemen, I will say that the legislature opened the door specifically for counties to do that, to reduce the acreage. It used to be that the General Assembly tied it to those present use values of the Machine React, they basically made a decision that county should have more lab too, and should be able to reduce that if they chose to do that. So they did away with tying it to present use value agriculture, timber, cattle operations, and just basically said the counties could limit it to whatever side of parts they were going to. Also, in my conversations with Mike, Mike indicated that this ordinance is not an ordinance that I drafted or that he drafted, but instead was model ordinance primarily that was provided by the state of North Carolina. There's obviously some involvement by the state of North Carolina ministering this program, and they were in hopes of trying to get some uniformity among the 100 counties in the ordinance that they were trying to work with, and so that's another thing that was trying to achieve here.
Yep. Consistency among counties.
In other words, if the consultant at the state had called about this ordinance, do you have a pretty good idea what was needed?
Yeah. And I can say, it's strictly voluntary. You, if you get in it and decide you want out, you've got to write a letter to the voluntary ag district board, and then 30 days, they'll take your name off.
Okay, that was a question, I think, actually question, maybe not, thought that deserved today, if someone puts their farm or parcel, if they put in this, and dad does that, consequently dad passes away, the land goes to kids.
Yeah.
Kids will do something different with the land.
Right, yeah.
They can do that.
30-day writ notice.
Yeah.
Does that answer your question?
I noticed too, it's overlapped, like 10 years from that, it automatically relieves.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there a notification?
Well, we're gonna have to contact the folks that had signed up originally, we just, we wanna contact them and tell them what we're doing, and are they still interested? Yeah. And it used to be called far, it can be confusing, just me. It used to be called farmland preservation, now they went to voluntary ag district, but it's, maybe it's the same thing. But yeah, we're gonna, we'll contact all the old folks, the folks that have signed up, Mike said.
I think the question was another mention too, the automatic renewal. That automatic renewal, you notify them that it's gonna renew, or they're just supposed to know that?
Uh, no, when that kind of, they, we're gonna come in the office, we'll have a little handout to give them, to tell them what to do.
Okay, so they'll have to advise that it's gonna automatically renew, and it's up to them to get back in.
If Commissioner Davis didn't decide that it wouldn't be out, again.
Again, they gotta do is 30 days, and they're out, so.
Yeah, okay. Well, that's all right. I've had some questions about it, because I talked with you, Mike, and some of the other commissioners, and I like this right here, I'm awful near your ordinances, especially when you're gonna pass another project somewhere or another, because down the road, you never know, personally have something set up per day, and now have a financial burden, they've got to change everything around, and I don't want to rope around somebody's neck because of being there.
Right.
Believe it.
Now, this.
I had that.
This one's due today.
Because it's voluntary, because it's reversed here.
Yep.
Anybody have any other questions, Mike, or Mike anything else you think we need?
I would, I love it.
Thanks, Mike.
Mike, appreciate your work.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Thanks.
Be a good project for the county, Mike.
Gentlemen, any questions for clarification, if not, I would entertain a motion to approve. Any other question before we close the public hearing?
Just double check and see if anybody wanted to speak, and then close the public hearing.
Okay, let's do that, double check one more time, does anybody else want to speak at this hearing? Okay, now we declare the hearing closed.
Clarification, what I wanted to note about it was, I make the motion, make the change.
Motion? A motion by Commissioner Hayes, seconded by Commissioner Tate, to approve the farmland pres, uh, voluntary farmland preservation with the proposed amendments, and this will lead to reinstatement of Chapter 155 of Macon County Code. Any discussion regarding that motion? On favor, seated, if I'm saying aye. Opposed? That motion passes unanimously. And Mike, more time, no further comment, we'll move on past that. Any adjustments or additions to the agenda before we proceed? You have your agenda, which you received a little better than a week ago. Any additions or corrections to the agenda?
I have two more versions, I have two more versions to add, I emailed the day that it was last minute.
Was that number 21, 27, 28?
Twenty-seven, I laid a copy of those out. It's based on.
Mr. Chairman, I have two, please.
Okay.
Under reports and presentations, we have with us Mr. Rhonda Blanton, who would like to make a short presentation on some events coming up in the area, and also under new business, we'd like to bring forth a resolution request for legislative goal. Deadline is September 17th, and we'd like to bring that forward tonight. We don't have to do a resolution, we just consent to the board.
And Commissioner Beal, you're asking that be played as under new business, out of number 12?
Yes, sir.
Okay, let's, let's make that 12 add, and we'll call that consideration of legislative goal. And just clarification, what that is, every year the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, which we're extremely involved with, will give a report on, and we went to this past week, has a set of goals, it's usually a fairly short list, basically it's things that we lobby the legislature of North Carolina to do or not do on behalf of the citizens of our county, and we were very involved in that, and so Commissioner Beal is asking for us to consider. Any other additions?
Mr. Chairman, it's my understanding that we are going to close session for attorney client privilege, so we're turning, I do have an issue.
Yes, I met with the attorney this afternoon, and we do have a couple of issues that we discussed with him that would come under attorney client privilege, so if you'd like to do that.
I just wanna make sure, so, got it out there.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I announced, for our last meeting, I announced Matt Mason, who kind of gave us a quick little report on where the planning board is, what subdivision ordinance on the review, and then also has advised their opinion on where we might move over the next task for the planning board, and we're gonna put them under reports and presentations or all business here.
Okay, we'll put them under, under number, out of number 10, and that would be 10C is the plan, and we'll make that, we'll make Matt Mason 10D, since that's actually reported to something, we're not asking for action necessary, so. It's gonna be 10D. In this, Mr. Manager?
Under new business, out of 12D, we'd like to put on that until next meeting, that change order, it started out to be a big change order, we're gonna do it for a small change order, we'll leave like some details on that, and I think it's on about 3000, adjustment there, but also we have a, need to go ahead and work on contract on the sewer water project, so we'll have to look at both next meeting.
Okay.
And also under, if we could, replace that, we have a request that came in, y'all may recall that originally, part of the table in Tennessee River Sewer Line was supposed to run up through, back valley, and come out on industrial block road, and that was changed from that, but those all those easements, they weren't all gathered, most easements that were, that were gathered back during that original phase, are not gonna be used for any time in the future, nothing we've had occasion to, and the board has agreed to release those easements back to the property owners, basically the property owners gave an easement for the sewer line, and we're trying to, to have the sewer line, and since there not gonna be a sewer line, we've had one property owner, Mr. Randy Cooper, and that's where his easement to be returned, I'd like to, if we could, and taking 12D out, replace it with, with the request for release of the easement.
Okay, I would compare to this, if you would, gentlemen, delete out of number 12D, strike that, we'll move that to the September meeting, and in place of that, put removal of sewer easement for Randy Cooper. Okay? Any other additions or additions from the agenda? Teresa, we'll have biscuits ready for breakfast. Okay, do we have motion to approve the agenda as amended? Some movements, gentlemen. I got motion by Commissioner Beal, seconded by Mr. Peppers, on favor, if free, the agenda, seated, if I'm saying aye. Opposed? The agenda stands approved. Under reports and presentations, we're honored to have Mr. Andrew Baldwin here, along with his mom, dad.
And grandpa.
And grandpa. Dennis, glad to have you. Andrew is, I'm sure will explain this, is an Eagles, this is for his Eagle Scout project, he is making a request to this board, so Andrew would ask you to come up, and we're not, we're not scary.
Not to men, anyway. Don't blame.
That way we can hear you, and they can hear you, the microphone there, he has a presentation regarding his Eagle Scout project, so, Andrew, before we adjourn.
Hi, thanks for letting me come out. My name is Andrew Baldwin, I'm a live scout, live scout troop too, too, and I'm prepared to work on the Eagle Scout project, and I've come to ask for your help. My idea for my project is to improve an abandoned African-American cemetery, it's called New Hope Cemetery, and it's located near Hemlock Hills and Rookwood Subdivision. New Hope Church was founded in 1885, and the church closed around 1940, and then later burned to the ground, leaving the cemetery with seven mark graves, a grade for a mark grave, to grow up and be forgotten by us. I'm requesting that the board commissioners vote to designate New Hope Cemetery as an abandoned and neglected public cemetery, and described in Art. 12 of North Carolina's general statutes. This will give the county authority to take proper care of and view of the cemetery. The county can even appoint a five-member board of trustees to make sure proper steps are taken to preserve New Hope and any other abandoned public cemetery in Macon County. This action will add to the history inherited in Macon County, and it is my goal to work towards becoming a new scout. With your approval, I would like to help with the effort to restore New Hope Cemetery by properly cleaning the seven mark gravestones in the cemetery, and helping it solidly, historical sign of property. Since no easy access to the ridge where the abandoned cemetery is located, I would like to help obtain necessary concessions or easements to gain access to the cemetery. I appreciate your time and consideration on this property, and I look forward to working with the county to help improve and prefer, because they're such an important part of our work.
Thank you, Andrew, just to, just to talk back to the legality of the bid, Chester, you may want to weigh in on this, but we talked, Chester and I meant to talk about this this afternoon, what Andrew's asking us to do is to declare that piece of property vacant and.
Abandoned.
Abandoned and public, which means, just what the words say, that it's a public cemetery, and it has been abandoned, that no one is carrying it, or no one is keeping it up. The definition of public was a little, a little fuzzy, it's according to state statute, but we've determined that I think we have enough evidence that it is, I'm also in receipt of a letter, and I think you gentlemen have a copy of that, this is from Ms. Josephine Burgess, who is part of our African-American community here, and most of you probably know her, wonderful lady, born in 1920, and she's 92 years old, she says she's the last living person to attend a New Hope church here in Franklin. I don't read the whole letter, but she basically said that Mr. Baldwin had been to her, and had requested her support for this, and shown her the pictures, and his plan, this what to do, and it sounds like in this letter that she wholeheartedly supports his efforts, encourages us to do what, what we can to make that happen. So what, what we need to do is declare that we have determined this property to be whatever Chester said.
Public campaign.
Public campaign, thank you. I mean, the church is, he's not a lawyer, but anyway, Chester, would you, would you address that, or discuss this after things on board, that full?
The general statutes make, make authority for a county to deal with cemeteries that are, that have been abandoned, and which are indeed public. It basically says, the county commissioners have control over those cemeteries. It's important to understand that the term abandonment and neglect may not have the common meanings that we normally describe to those terms. Under General Statute 65-85, abandoned cemetery is one that ceased from maintenance or used by a person, and leave it to the real property with the intent of not, again, maintaining the real property in the course of the future, and if past is any predictor of the future in this particular case, I understand this particular cemetery is overgrown and in great need as Andrew or someone working on it. As far as the definition of a public cemetery is concerned, cemetery, it is defined as a cemetery for which there is no qualification to purchase, own, or come into possession of a grave in that cemetery. And from speaking with county manager, my understanding that there was likely no specific church membership requirement or otherwise to be buried in this particular cemetery, and that being the case, no other qualification, it would be deemed, or could be deemed, public cemetery.
We appreciate your research, and those of you don't know Chester, I can promise you that's thorough research.
Gentlemen, in light of that, I would like to make the motion that this board debar, that this cemetery, that's what Chester said.
Exactly what Chester said. Stated again, said, public and abandoned, public and abandoned.
But the real thanks needs to go to Drew Baldwin. I mean, known as an Eagle Scout, this is a preservation of part of the Macon County District, that had probably been long forgotten and not been.
Mr. Chairman, it's been a lot of years since I stood where he is, but I'd like to second that. I, I know the effort that goes in putting an Eagle Scout project together, I did one myself, and congratulations on one heck of a project here, it really is. And since I used to walk those bridges before Jack Horton built his house up there, we asked, I, I know exactly where you're talking about, and I grew up in Forest Hills, just across the, just across the road, but we couldn't hunt there, but we could get outside of town, let us, we could hunt up there, and so we used to chase squirrels and stuff up there, but congratulations on a superb project, and it'd be my honor as a, hope to be someday fellow Eagle Scout with you, that, I want to be around, I will have one request, that when you get it, pause, and let us know, I'd like to be there, so I'd like to second those.
Okay, we have motion by Commissioner Beal, seconded by Mr. Peppers, to approve the request. Any discussion?
I would like my comment to, first of all, I appreciate what you've done, things like this are really great, very beautiful, there's people like you, that are leading the need. Number one, I want to ask, we had something brought for us just six months or so, there was something similar to this, from Jerry Sutton, probably that period, basically, what we're gonna be doing, I guess, is some main thing?
It's, it's just declaring that, that no, basically, my understanding, it's saying that no one else is keeping it up, and no one else is.
Indeed, there comes some corresponding responsibilities of the county to deal with abandoned public cemeteries, and those requirements are set forth, then, with that general statute for you, I imagine.
Would you guys like to give a little clarification on what, what is, what we believe, what a failure is?
The General Statute 65-113 provides that county commissioners are to have control of abandoned public cemeteries, and it basically reads that county commissioners in various counties are authorized to oversee all abandoned public cemeteries in the respective counties, to see that the boundaries and lines are clearly laid out, defined and marked, and take proper steps to preserve them from approachment, and they are hereby authorized to appropriate from the general fund of the county, whatever sums may be necessary for time-to-time, for the purposes. Goes on to read and says, the board of county commissioners of various counties may appoint a board of trustees, not exceed five in number N, to serve at the will of the board, and may impose upon such trustees the duties required of the board commissioners by this article, and such trustees may accept gifts, donations, for the purpose of upkeep and dedication of such cemeteries. I don't have that entire chapter of the general statutes, will be only copied, but I might be applicable here, but there are some responsibilities of identifying abandoned public cemeteries, and commissioners do have that responsibility to identify those and make a record.
And hopefully Drew, it brings our attention, you should do the responsibility, of those folks, and serve the history of the county, so.
Let me summarize what he just said, if you felt like we needed some money here in the process, you can come back and ask us for that, remember that?
That's basically what he said.
Basically. Is that what you said, Chester?
I said it.
That's the important part, yeah. He has to say all the big words. Okay, any other discussion? All in favor of approving the motion, seated, if I'm saying aye. Opposed? That motion passes. Drew, if you could come up here, we'd like to have our picture made with you, is that fair? And if you don't want to use this, that's okay, it may hurt you. We would like to have our picture made with you, please, sir. Okay?
Go ahead, Bob.
Wow. Kevin, will you scoot to your right or left a little bit?
Me?
Yes, please. Her name is.
It's hard for you, you step to the left.
Oh, my goodness. Drew, we've got a special presentation for this, says special thanks, Macon County Board of Commissioners, it's got Macon County, won't come out of sample on there, so this is, this one for you, Macon County flag, that's inside, Drew, turn that to the left here, I'm gonna give you a wrong finger. We need more agenda items like that, gentlemen.
That's right.
Thank you, Drew, and.
Thank you all. Now the real work begins.
Now, let me, let me point out one other thing, I forgot to say this, if you looked on the plat, the lot that's right across from that is belonging to Mr. Jack Horton.
Yes.
I don't know if you recognize that name? And so Drew, when it's a real hot day, and you need some help clearing the woods out and that kind of thing, Mr. Horton'd be glad to help.
So by definition, it will be supervised.
Thank you. Item number 10B, we have a proposed business plan for Macon County Heritage Center, at the historic Cowie School, and Stacy Guffey is here, I think, to present that, so Stacy, welcome, and if you would just sort of give us some background, the things that you're here for.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. And I'll keep you quick. Not here to ask you for anything tonight, but just to present the business plan that we've been working on for the past year for the Cowie School, and to thank you on behalf of myself and the Land Trust for the opportunity to do that. Hopefully, each of you have a plan in front of you, and also, I ask that you be presented with the Cowie West Mill Historic District brochure that the friends of the Riggman store had prepared, so you can see all the things going on out in the Cowie community, and how the school ties in with that. The community began their efforts to preserve the school back in two thousand and five, two thousand and six, and they began to develop ideas about reusing the school. And out of that process, the county reached an agreement with the school board, and ensured that the community would be able to continue to use the school after it ceased to operate as an elementary school. Those efforts led to a two thousand and ten workshop by the Cowie Community Development Organization, Macon County and the Land Trust for the Little Tennessee. In that workshop, over ninety participants were interviewed, fourteen governmental, educational, nonprofit organizations took part, and overwhelmingly, the participants wanted the school to remain open to the public and to function as a community center and cultural heritage center for the benefit not only of Cowie, but all of Macon County. The business plan turns all of that input from the workshop into workable facility. As you go through it, you'll see that it outlines uses of each area and each rooms and the steps necessary to accommodate those uses, as well as a potential for income generation in each of those areas. For example, the first part deals with the grounds, and with minimal improvements of the grounds, outdoor events, performances can be accommodated, fundraisers, family events, things like that, while keeping the playground, walking track, and the ball field open for community in daily use. The plan recommends a mix of funding at the beginning of operations, from private donations, fundraisers, county funds, grants, all with the goal of becoming self-sustaining in the third year through a mix of retail, rental, donations, and grant funding. I believe this project will be a success because I've already received dozens of calls from people wanting to volunteer their time and their skills to the project. Additionally, Cowie Community Development Organization this summer raised eight thousand dollars from community members, and they've got plans for further fundraisers. As we work through developing the plan, we also build a lot of partnerships. You'll be happy to know that on the local level, we have many partnerships from the Macon County Schools, SEC, WCU, the Historical Society, Eastern Band of the Cherokee, and we have some bigger partnerships throughout the state with the Rural Center, Preservation North Carolina, and the Blue Ridge National Heritage Area, among others. Thanks to this process, the Cowie School will continue to be the center of the community and will provide Macon County with a great place for venues, a place to learn traditional skills, cooking, farming, arts crafts, and music, a place to relive the history of our area, a place for families together, and I think most importantly, a place to build entrepreneurship and develop traditional skills-based businesses. I was asked to give you a message. I talked to some folks out in Cowie who've been working really hard on the project, talked to them today, and they asked me to convey their thanks for your commitment to preserve the Cowie School. Thank you.
Chairman, we've worked, before most of us on the board, I guess I'm the only one that was left when it originally started this process with Superintendent Riggman when we made the pact that it would be turned over to the county once the school was ended. And I think we're working on that.
Well, I was on the other end, I was on the school board.
Oh.
We're starting.
That didn't last long.
I was on the other end of this thing.
So Stacy, we appreciate your work, and thanks to Land Trust of Little Tennessee for their input, and they've done an excellent job. It's really amazing, the interest that's just generated, and we hope that that can continue, and it can be a place of destination for not only that community, but for the county. And folks come in, another property extension certainly shows a real interest, as does SEC show a real interest, and so we think this is the first step, Mr. Chairman, and what we hope is another piece of history, like the graveyard we talked about a while ago. This is the last school that we know of in North Carolina, Mr. Chairman, that was built with WPA, and that started in thirty-eight and completed in forty-one. So this school was completed in about forty-one.
Forty-one.
And of course, LTLT is well invested in that community, if you read the pamphlet, and of course, right on front there, you have what was the busiest trading area on the east coast of Cherokee Heights. But it was the Mall of Georgia of that country. So we appreciate it, Stacy, and, Mr. Chairman, we had asked, as part of that, we take this under advisement, and of course, if we can ask Stacy any questions, he's worked pretty hard on this, and we appreciate it.
Stacy, I want to say, as the very first meeting up there, I think we were still talking about Cowie School, and I think we've been talking about it ever since. I tried to get as many Cowie development committees, I'd like to just give a shout out to those folks, they have worked really, really hard to try to make this thing happen. They've tried very hard to keep their partnership and not make it a burden, and I just want to say thank you, because it's made it a whole lot easier for me to work here up on this side of the desk, and Stacy, thank you, I think you've done a good job. And obviously, the goal someday will be that you guys are just out there with your own board, running your thing, and the only thing you see from the county is every now and again, Seppa come out, mow the grass. But I appreciate all the hard work, and I especially want to say to the folks at the Cowie Development Org, Community Development Organization, it ain't over yet, but we've made a lot of progress, and you're the reason why, and you need to stay with us until we can finish this thing out. But thank you very much for all that you've gotten done. We've got a few of them out here tonight, so I appreciate it, all you've done, and we just need to stay active. Don't stop now, we've got the momentum, we can get it.
All right, you need to come in.
Mr. Chairman? It's a good business plan to get a chance to read a full document, you had a summary in your agenda packet. There's a lot of work that's going into this, and Stacy's done a really good job putting all this together for us, because as you said, as Mr. Perry said, it's preserving a big part of the history of this county. In order to make this thing work, as we envision it, we're going to put on those two or three steps, and then we can take it after this. Obviously, first step is to get some transfer of more education to the county, because it's in the process now, county attorney's working with the school board attorney to take care of that. The next thing is that we need to have somebody to coordinate this over the next year. This young man's done business plan, I think he'd be a good candidate for that, but we need some kind of a contract for somebody to do that. We'd like to put together something to bring you back to at your September meeting. The other thing is that since the Little Tennessee Land Trust, LTLT has been such an integral part in working with us on putting this project together, and have a chance to talk to Mr. Carlson, and with all of the, and what we'd like to do is also put together a little memorandum of understanding that outlines how they can help the county promote and support our efforts in getting grants and helping this thing to be successful. So nothing elaborate, Mr. Attorney, but something pretty straightforward that says what the LTLT can do to help us, and what we can do to help them, to have that common goal of making this project successful. So we'd like to probably grab something like that, bring the right pictures up, and remember, Greg.
My earliest memory of this is probably two thousand and four or two thousand and five, and it brings to mind how impressive that community organization is down there, the spirit of the community. It was oh-four, Betty, I guess, or oh-five, Eric Humber, I remember, came to me, I was chairman of the school board at the time, and he said, "What are you going to do with the Cowie School?" I said, "We don't even have a plan to close it now." But knowing that would happen, and we took the final step, I guess, Mr. Manager, ten days ago or something, dedicated the school down there, and when we did that, it officially closed that, I guess, six, seven years of use to that, and it's still, so it's rewarding to see plans come together, and people who are willing to work together to make good things happen, so.
Thank you.
And we can get them a trailer of that, under that license.
I hear about that every day.
And we made a point, when we opened the Iowa School, as hard as it's been, I guess, been a little over fifteen years in doing, but when the school opened this year, this is the first time in thirty years that not a single student has gone to the school in a moment of youth. So it's a great time in Macon County, really.
Well, it's a gem out there, and it's very rare when the museum is the building the museum is in. The museum building is a museum itself, and that is a rarity, and so it's a very, it's a gem out there, and we just got to, we just got to...
I think we're solid behind this project, so we'll keep in touch, we'll instruct our manager to work on that and bring us, get some documentation next month.
Yeah, we'd like to bring you somewhere back to your September level meeting.
Stacy, thank you.
Thanks, Nancy.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Ron Blanton? Where is it? I'd like to welcome you to be, Russell.
I have an assistant who'll conduct it.
We'd like to show it, Russell.
My name's Rhonda Blanton. For the ones that don't know me, I'm with the Franklin High School Athletic Booster Club. I'm really proud of Franklin High School, grew up here, graduated, was in school with Kevin and with Ron, and yes, with Bobby Peppers.
Leaving me out again.
No wonder. All you guys are way over me.
Well, he was in school with my brother, so he had to put up with me. Yeah. I'm very proud of the athletic team, so if you come out and support them, and the band, and all the other clubs at Franklin High School. The Booster Club has, for the past three, two years, this will be the third year, done an event called Salute the Veterans. This year, it will be on September fourteenth with Leiprard. It will start at six forty-five. We ask all the veterans and the guests to be there at six thirty. This is a certification to everyone here. We have tickets that are being printed this week, I have a few, but we are printing them this week, and the veteran and the guest get in free. So these will be available at the high school, and at the chamber, and at the party zone, so you can pick them up anywhere, and as many as you want. I will also invite the veterans from Leiprard, so they're going to be invited too. We've had some TV contacts, I do not know if they're coming through, Mr. Beal's aware of them, they're big, if they come, they're pretty big, but we're working on that right now. We also have another event, which is new this year, and took me two years to get it going, but for the first time ever, Franklin High School will have an Athletic Hall of Fame. We put the nomination forms out last year, we let the public decide the first class, we narrowed it down to five. The class consists of Coach Tom Brady, Paula Corbin, Shawn Bryson, the seventy-six football team, and the seventy-one football team, which Mike Reddlove is a part of. And I think, to our knowledge, we put our heads together...
Trained by the nineteen seventy football team, I'd just like to throw that out there, to make sure we understand where that...
Bobby said he taught them everything they knew, so. To our knowledge, putting our heads together, there's three county employees that'll be inducted in that Hall of Fame, Mike Reddlove, Joe Reddlove, and Roger Guest. Yeah, I hated Roger. I think that's it, but that's pretty good for the first class, and we're very, very happy to get this going, and you're invited to that. That event will be on October the twelfth, also starting at six forty-five, and we ask everybody to be there at six thirty.
That's on the same night?
No, it's on the twelfth of October.
September fourteenth is to salute the veterans.
Yes, and Kevin will be doing, Luke Rich will be doing the singing at that event, so.
If you say with it.
Well, you agree to it, so.
He can go there, sing with Trevor.
So I'm very proud to get this going, so please come and support both events if you can.
Well, we know that, on behalf of veterans of the county, and also the football program, and I might say the record-setting football program is now on twelve regular season games in a row, for my friends in Cherokee County, seven is seven, I can't help it. But thank you for all the efforts you've put in. It's a special thing. If you've never been in the stadium when they do Veterans Night, it is, if you walk out of there with your eyes dry, you're not human. It is hard, and when I was coaching, it was real hard, because I had to walk away, leave these guys, go back in the locker room. This year, I can stay out there a little longer than I go in the booth, but I want to thank you, because you were the inspiration of it, you were the brain trust, you were the one that put it together, and I know you'll never say that about yourself, but if it hadn't been for you, it wouldn't have been there. So thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Just follow, Mr. Chairman, as we can attest, we have one with us tonight. The World War II veterans are getting less and less as we have these things.
Talk about Mr. Rob.
And so, but Mr. Rich is there, and so, the last time we had, I believe, I believe Mr. Rob, we had eight World War II veterans.
Eight.
And that's really something special.
And we're going to do a special honor again this year to the World War II, and we're adding Korea to this one, because they're dying, regretfully dying as fast as World War II.
We appreciate it.
And my dad, hopefully, will be there at age eighty-six, so.
Wonderful. Thank you, Ron. Tell us what you did for football.
They hang them all with a random gas station.
They did that my senior year, too.
I didn't do that. I was ten years old, I remember two plays, had chesting lip and chesting, that's about all I...
Can we make this announcement tonight while we're talking about veterans? We have been approved for the naming of the Nathan Henry Bridge through the Department of Transportation. It was passed by the committee, and it passed by the entire board. I was talking to the DOT today, the signs will be ready by the end of September. We'll probably have this dedication, we're hoping that some, we know some officials from Raleigh are definitely coming, we don't know who all will be here, but we'll be looking probably on a Friday afternoon in late October to have this dedication for Nathan Henry. And we said, of course, Nathan Henry is one of the longest-serving field duties in Vietnam War, but he's been recognized for his community service. There are no, in North Carolina, you have the Blue Star Memorial of Highway, which is for all veterans, and so they don't name them individually for bridges, roads, et cetera, but Nathan Henry, of course, has done some very special things to this community, and we appreciate Larry Kearney, our new DOT board member, who picked this up, and of course, Congress Borough, who we work closely to get, and the DOT board. We think it'll be a very special day. The bridge will be the overpass bridge, as you go out of Franklin, the overpass bridge of sixty-four on four forty-one, so we think it'll be a very special day, and we'll have more information for the media, is that coming?
Thank you, Mr. Rob. Mr. Tate, I think we add you as number ten D, reporting the planning board, if you want to give us some background, if they recommend us, Mr. Mason will turn it over to you.
Sure, thank you, Captain. If you recall, our last meeting, we discussed that the planning board is moving along very efficiently right now. We had tasked them with the process of reviewing the subdivision areas. I would say they're not far off from completing that, so I think we can start considering what their next task might be, if we subscribe. We'd ask Mr. Mason to come along, and kind of get us an update on where they are, and maybe give us his recommendations of where the planning department goes. We might direct them to get an X, and we can get better advisement, maybe at their next meeting, supplement the correct motion that we want to go on. That's my guess, we asked Matt.
Mr. Mason, Mr. Chairman.
The planning board has met, it's four months now, and we're, I would say, probably two months, like we're bringing the orders back to review of Chester, and then bringing it to the board, so we've had some long, length discussions, changed a few things, some things we're going to keep the same. It's going real smooth. I talked to Jack Morgan a couple times about work process, when we got there. Between his discussions, my opinions, and some of the general issues that come from the public, the main concern that we can receive is the sign orders. We have had a lot of signs that's out of compliance, especially down four forty-one. We have had a lot of signs that's out of compliance, especially down four forty-one. We've had several complaints of significant mentality down four forty-one. It's time to make a change of looking from the issue down, down a quarter. The good thing about that is, is a lot of that's regulated by D O T, so we have a partnership with them. The other thing that has been discussed is an issue of the floodplain. Basically what's involved in that is currently we don't allow filling the floodplain. Technically we do. But we put it by the order. And that's something that we're going to discuss.
The floodplain thing, and we talked about it when it adopted before most of y'all were on the board. But it says in there, if you have dirt on your own property, you can take that dirt and fill the floodplain. Don't let it change them basically before the water.
And so.
But your, your property, like you brought in, actually.
On that, on that parcel of property, you can take it and add. But in North Carolina, when we adopted the floodplain, that is one area where we went above what the state does.
That's correct.
That, they are some areas, but there are some stipulations on how to do that. So I think that would be something that Mr. Tate and the planning board might want to look at. I believe there's a lot of property owners would appreciate that. We certainly won't do nothing to interfere with their, with their family insurance. You know, we've got to be careful. But, but in some cases, I think that if we go by the recommendations that Matt sent to me and that I've been reading about, I think that would be a discussion to have.
Good, Jim. Currently the difference is on some field is allowing it, off some field is not. It's always one of those parts. And we could probably handle the changes, but we don't understand how they want us to have the planning board with something like that challenge.
Let me just throw this out. The only other thing I've had some comments from the board about time to time is the high impact ordinance. And I know we've had some general discussions about that task, Matt, so that may be something you guys might want to talk. I know the direction needs to come from us, but we're, we're looking to you to sort of, you know, help us with that. I know there's.
There's a part of the community we're going to make an affair and they did, we did promise that we would look at it and come back with some provisions or at least address some issues and decide where we want to.
I know it came up with the, what was the company, the nomination of the gas.
That was, uh, glossing down. The federal gas.
So that may be one of the, somewhere it is.
Yeah, and we could prioritize to refer, so.
That's what I was going to recommend is get Mr. Tate to come to us. Y'all have a chance to kick it around. Stack them up to what you think and then we'll take a look at it and reshuffle.
And that's, that's the advantage on all these that we, that are in place. We're going to go back and look at it.
Sure.
Times change and I think most of us on this board will.
I appreciate bringing that up because that was a past commitment that we made to that particular group. We'll take a look at it. We got two in on the list and so we can just give that look at.
Yeah, and we certainly do need to look at it.
Nothing changes, even if we say, yeah, do what we want you to do, we still need to, we owe them a look.
The only concern I would have is maybe the issue with some of the records that I've had on the road.
Oh, I'm not saying it's the top of the list.
Right.
I'm not, as long as it's on the list, I'm where I'm at.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I think we need to take a look at it.
You guys, you guys stack them up and we'll take a look.
Yeah, I'll, we'll have it on our next thing sometime.
Good, Jim. Now, that's like a question on that, the fine ordinance, do you feel like that they are some problem, not their causes? That's it, it's going to Georgia, it's going to science.
I think there are some issues with temporary signs, especially intersections. The main issue with the Georgia Road and the French Bridge. The problem is most of the smaller cars that drive them today, we're getting the small temporary signs in the ground. They're not set in a light format to allow people to view portal.
As far as I'm talking about, like, is it science for the road? Do you have any complaints there?
No, usually not. The only complaints really that we've received, received are along the Georgia Road and. On twenty-eight, both of those highways, twenty-eight sixty-four and four forty-one are just told by the. So we're trying to work a partnership out of them and just having discussions with property owners that have got the signs, the temporary signs. At least get out of the way.
But wouldn't twenty-eight just send it by the way? That, that makes a lot of difference too.
That's a huge difference.
Oh, that's a, that's a huge difference. Have we done that several years ago?
One business on the Georgia Road we're dealing with now is just trying to permit, figure out do I advertise it to the state permits? Those are regular, they said.
I know this, that's probably, I believe, all of them, Mr. Reed, you might not, about three places on four forty-one. It's true, thank you. Being living, right, speaking, being attached, is it, the US House coming in there? And signage is hard to read, things are like the signage is so close to here. It almost looks like we're still seeing the eventual signs, especially on the rainy night. But you're trying to watch the business system, that is so black and powerful, this can be, you know, a couple of problems driving that, it is. This is a big problem.
Is it like there have been a fan of talking for?
Yeah, but I've never gone, of course, running there long enough to say, oh, this is a fast fire restaurant, probably fast fire. What used to be cake, dress, blunt, broil, no, it's. Just one and the other. You know, it's been a little, uh, McDonald's down there on, like, the, our greatest, just, you just very, very dangerous.
And do you repeat the dressing, that might be small to eventually remove that, turn around, touch the torch on the dressing board.
Yeah, well, I don't know. It's, it's hard for me to say. I was looking at patients coming there and. Thought, I'm just trying to figure out what kind of patients were surviving, so I was looking at it. And I started to see a lot of these problems. That are being.
Thank you, Mr. Tate.
Thank you.
Thanks, Pat.
Good job, man. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good job.
Mr. Tate.
Yeah, let me just say that that's a word. Doing really well and I think you'll all be fun with surprise with the recommendations and clarifications. I just asked Chester if he was a blast meeting. This was Robert Rollin. He said he was. I hope that one, well, let me also give props to Carl Glaswegens. I think they're just outstanding God as chairman. Can't say that about them.
I think you're doing a good job. I would not look like I'm getting a comment, but they do set north Carolina really great places.
Anything else on that? And Jim, thanks for bringing us that. Now, I mentioned a moment ago, we'll call this T and E. This will be a report from us as a whole week. This past week, we attended the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners' annual conference. It was held in Raleigh this year. It rotates around. It was in the Charlotte Concord area last year. I believe next year it's in Greensboro. What that is, is there really were three times when county commissioners from all these counties get together. One is the annual conference, one's down, I think Rhonda General held in August, is it not? And then, as many of you know, in May, we attended the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners' legislative conference. Basically when we go to Raleigh, we try to influence the decisions that our lawmakers there make and generally, at least my short period has some tests of that. And then's the, where you call it one in Washington?
Yeah.
The NACO, that's the, that's the National Association, the North Carolina Association that participates in that. But our, our, real proud to be part of Macon County last week. All five of our commissioners went. Probably one of the few counties, we did see, there were, I think, twelve counties that didn't send the same commissioner. And we had all five of our commissioners there. In the business being, there were eighty, I believe there were eighty-eight counties represented and we got to vote on several issues. Appreciate these guys letting me be our voting delegate, that we sit behind Macon County sign and, and cast your vote. Richard Beagle was promoted. He ran last year as the second vice president and won that seat. It's a progressive, if you move up the ladder, basically you're elected second vice president if reelected by the group, which he was. He moved to his first vice president. This year, next year, he'll be president-elect and then in two thousand fifteen, I guess it was, he'll be president. Two thousand fourteen, he'll be the president of the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, which is a real honor, not only for him, but for us, to be represented. The last president we had this in the state was Mr. Miles Gregory. I believe that was nineteen eighty-four, wasn't it?
Well, no, it was the first one from this area, but after that we have one from Jackson County.
From Jackson County, okay. The last one.
Miles is the only one from Macon County.
Miles is the only one from Macon County and only had two, our western counties over there. Since then, independent organizations since nineteen oh eight.
And it, it was a good conference and we all, we had a good time and we learned a lot. I think participate actively in the, in the process of moving forward. So anything, anything to add, Jim, if you want to say anything about it?
No, I'm just going to give a crisp props of one of the pluses I sent through Macon County to recognize for the resupply.
That's right. Well, and yeah, I think there were number one, per capita.
I, I can't remember, but I remember they were recognized.
You're the top seed.
Not an argument. I heard your name down in our mansion, that conference. Pretty good.
And all the west, the Kansas, Mr. Chairman, all the far west was there except for Lake County. And that's the first time that's happened in a long time, so we appreciate people from far west making, making trips to Raleigh and far west becoming more. And that's always a good thing.
It becomes a little easier to remind them that western North Carolina is not history.
We have a habit.
Yeah, we do. Don't we bring that up sometimes? Bishop Pepper, did they?
No, it's just, it was a, it was a outstanding conference. Just a little disappointment, Mr. Chairman, that we don't have our little red and green buttons up there.
We can't vote.
No, we can't do that way. It was a, it was a superb, superb conference and some really good workshops and some outstanding speakers. I got a lot that I know and I'm sure the rest doesn't.
We just, you had, it's a good opportunity. These fellows went to legislative thing and I was the, you get one-on-one time with almost every secretary and the captain. So we spent an hour with the secretary of human services and you wonder why he won't take off. But we followed up with some conversations yesterday and today with other folks, so. So it's, it's a good opportunity. You have to go where they're at, right, Mr. Man?
Exactly.
I would like to make this, I'm just, I really enjoyed working with them in San Antonio. Jack, we appreciate the effort you made.
It's a good example of how bipartisanship works together. We don't always agree on everything. That's okay. That's why we have two parties. But when we go to situations like that, it's interesting if, if we need to get in to see the governors, some of the governor's office folks or some of the cabinet that, that. Seems like Mr. Pepper, Mr. Beal have a little more influence there than the three others. Then we need to get to see the Speaker of the House, who's Republican, we were able to have some influence there. So by utilizing the fact that we do have two parties, hopefully we get the best for Macon County and we strive to do that.
And you've already said in your party lines, mention.
Not, not there.
Not there.
Because we're all in the same boat. You realize you're all the same. You're out there, you know, you're looking out for your own county. So we're very proud of Macon County, it's representable.
Moving on to old business, we have Seth Haves here with us and give you a little background on this. We had, the idea has been a few months ago, we had two, I'll say major capital projects that, that we needed to fund or felt like we needed to fund. The first one was the, the computers for the schools that had become, had fallen far behind and needed about a billion and a half dollars to bring those up. We decided not to address that in the, in Jack Wood's regular part of budget. I guess I'm not using the right words, but to pull that out and look at it separately as, as far as funding that from our fund balance, which we have done. And second, one of those projects that we've mentioned specifically during the budget process was the need to renovate the pool area as well as bath house. And we talked with Seth. We've had conversations through our, our liaison with Mr. Pepper has done an excellent job at working with not only Seth, but with the, with the board out there. And we certainly didn't want to go over their head and wanted their suggestion on that. They've been fully on board. Last, I guess, two, two meetings ago, we allocated the money to have plans drawn and so we would have, we intelligently approached this. We need to know what we're beating on, spoke to beating, we need to know what they're beating on, so we, we authorized those funds to be allocated. And asked Seth to, to take that. So Mr. Pepper, we turned.
I'll let Seth do most of the talking here. I'll just suffice to say, guys, I just want to, I need to leave, dampen things down just a little bit. Unless I'm wrong, Seth, unless a miracle happen today, we're only going to see plans for the pool house tonight.
Yes.
That is because there was, there was a replan that we had a concept of how we would do it. When it was inspected by health department and not criticizing anybody, they kind of reoriented that plan for us. And so we had to go back and redraw and that took some time. Everybody's right, we're going to come out with a better product, the one we like better.
We're going to.
And we're going to come out with it for just about what we said we're going to come out with, maybe a little less. And I'll let Seth talk to that, but I just want to say, did you mention that there's no tax increase associated with this?
I didn't, but you.
I, I just like to make sure that we all understand that. There is no tax increase associated with this project.
Okay, go ahead, Seth. And, well, and let's just be clear, since we're talking about it, we, we made this, I made this clear when I first mentioned it and Mr. Pepper and I have been working together on this. And he and I both have suggestions to the board that we do this, one without tax increase and two without borrowing money. To, if we, if we approve this in the end, let this money be taken from our fund balance, which we've been proud to have because it actually, the fund balance is built to some degree. Because our budget, we've lowered our budget and our fund balance as a percentage of that budget has become a little higher. And we feel like that we make good stewards of county money, not to continue to take things like this from as long taxes, but to take it from money that we already have.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I just want to make sure we get that out there so we can kill the rumor before it starts. Seth, I'll leave it to you.
That's, that's where we are. And so we asked Seth to go get these plans, bring them back. You have those in front of you, so Seth.
All right. Even though we don't have a, a set of specs, per se, for the, for the pool itself, we do have a rough plan. She's in the process now and our architect is in the, in the process of specing everything out. She says that I should have a set of biddable plans by Friday or, or the very first of next week at the latest. As you can see on, on the pool plan itself, the line that goes right down the middle of the, in, in between the two pools, that was our, that was our getter. We had to, whenever we, we extended that wall to create a brand new pool on the, on the kiddie side, what we're considering the kiddie side. That's considered a new construction, so instead of just a renovation, it turned into a new construction of a pool. Therefore, we had to go by the new construction rules and guidelines set by the state. We had to basically fence everything in. And by placing that fence there, we no longer could use the footprint of the baby pool that exists now. We had to scoot it over to be able to get the, the distance from that fence to the main pool and then from that fence to the kiddie pool.
And you and I talked about this at the end of the week or last week, yes. And that's, that's a health department issue?
And, and state guidelines. Any, any new, any new construction of a pool, if you have a kiddie side or a, a, a baby pool, it has to be totally locked separate from your main pool. They don't want kids to be able to run from one straight over to the other.
And instead of using a chain link fence, can we use it like an iron? And instead of using a chain link fence, can we use it like an iron?
Yes. Yeah, and I, I think, I think, uh, we, we'll have.
I agree, that's, this, this is like, this is like putting paint up on your garden.
It, it is. It is. Uh, whenever she called me back and said.
I can't believe it.
Uh, you know, uh, we had, we had the, the plan done. I mean, she was ready to spec it out two weeks ago and waiting on, uh, uh, our, our, uh, get approval from our health department. Whenever they, they called her back, basically.
Did you guys think the same?
Uh, we, we called three other people, uh, hire. Uh, Jane Morgan was, was sick to death with this also. She, she says that, that she doesn't like having the, the big gate right through the middle of the project. So she went above, uh, who, who gave her her first off, uh, to hire people. And they both gave, came back with the same answer. Um, but.
I just looked at one. They just done one and I don't have nothing like this.
I don't know, uh.
Is there something we can go to? Can we appeal this somewhere higher? Is there?
Brother, you can go to Division of Bump Health and that's where they went. This is a law that's put down by the legislature. It has nothing to do with the fact that it's the health department. We just get.
Yeah.
We understand.
At the same time, when something doesn't make sense, I think we've got to write the question. I mean, I'm all, if we have to do it, we have to do it unless we make it look like something and you put, you put gates in it. I guess I'm thinking about, let's think about practically, you've got a two-year-old and you've got a ten-year-old.
Yeah, and momma's gonna, right now, have to choose which one's.
And you have to walk back and forth with a fence to do it. I mean, it'd seem like we could go to someone who has some common sense.
And I agree. I mean, and if there's a, if there's an emergency where there's a rush of people one way or another.
You've got two gates.
This is a safety issue in, in my eyes. So it, it, as it stands now.
Once you bid it, once you bid it with it and we'll see if we.
Yeah, I bid it both ways.
It, it will come back, yeah.
And we'll see if we.
And that, that's kind of the, the, the way we're, we're looking at it. Anything, uh, the fence will be a separate contract away from, from the pool anyway.
I suppose we can, we can get around that.
To, to the end.
I can't picture in my mind exactly, Tom could probably get me, how this fence would sit anyway. Where, you've got, you've got the end of the pool before the kiddie pool sets. It sets up on top.
Yeah, it has to be.
Right swing. But is it underwater?
Yeah, it had, no, no, no. This is on the deck.
Well, it's on the deck.
Yeah, it's on the deck.
Eight feet, eight feet to the fence from this pool and then another eight feet to the kiddie pool. And the fence was right down the middle.
And the fence has to be bonded. It, it can't be anything that you just screw with the concrete. It has to be.
Jackson County has one, going to give me what it was.
Well, they might, they might do it.
They have one.
Yeah, and, and their, their kiddie section.
There's a spout, there's a much smaller.
Yeah, their kiddie section's small, but they started at the fence. It's got like a fling at the top, but they had to, they had to have it.
It, it won't look that bad, well, once it's all done. If, if we, if we can go with something other than chain link, uh, chain link kind of.
It's not chain link in Jackson.
No.
You can use an iron, like an iron plate.
You can. And, and we're, we're getting some prices on that a, as we speak. Um.
But we'll let that hold us up, that's just a.
No, 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 no. But if, if we can do it without it, that, that would make it a whole lot better. But in moving that, it, it, it basically enabled us to make the, the pool a little bit wider and a little bit longer, um, which will be able to hold more, more, more people. Uh, it was, it's a little too narrow if we use the same footprint as, as the original anyway. So we ended up with a better, a better product, um, out of it. But, uh, you know, right now, i- it's not ideal, but, but that's, that's how we are.
One, one of your rational arguments may be arguing that it's a renovation and that.
Well, that's what I'm saying. And it is, it is a renovation.
We have, well, but because it's having to be constructed and, and even as a mission qualified as a new construction, that might be one of the ways that you can find a new pool or something.
The worst is. We don't focus good time.
And while you're on the pool part, Seth, you wanna just go over sort of, I mean, we've got the drawing in front of us with the business progress and explain that's just sort of what the.
And this is not with Peter.
No, no, this is aquatics, H two O. This, this is the pool company. We, we basically looked at this, the overall project and the two, uh, the building is one project and the pool construction is, will be a, will be a separate.
Could you go over the components of exactly what's in the, the, the shower pool, what you're doing to the larger.
Okay. If, if you want to go to the second page, um, will be a, a close-up of the kiddie pool. Um, the area with the X in it, where there's not a lot of stuff, uh, will be just a two-feet waiting, waiting pool. Um, the steps, instead of being in one corner, as, as it sits now, uh, will run the entire length of that in. So, um, there'll be plenty of space for, for mothers or whoever to, to sit there while their kids are swimming around. Um, if you come up to the rain cat, that is, that is the mushroom type things where, uh, it, it's a, it's a raised water feature. Um, the sneaky soaker is a, if you, if you're familiar with them, is buckets that fill and then they, then they dump. Uh, kids love them. Uh, and from that point where the first, uh, the double lines go across, it kind of fans out. So that first section will be a beach entry. Uh, it's a, it's a zero entry into, into the pool. They gradually gets deeper to, to that two-foot level. Um.
So it starts out with, with no dent, or it's just.
No, no. It, it's just like walking into the ocean. Uh, it, it'll start and gradually get deeper as it goes. So if you've got a toddler, they can come and, and sit down in one-inch deep water or go all the way down to, to two feet of, of water.
And the far end of this pool beyond the black dots, that's two feet deep?
Yes.
So it goes from zero to two feet.
Yes. Yeah, all the excess, um, area in that pool will be two feet deep. Um, the, the rainbow will be raised pipes that make an arch four feet nine. Um, they'll all be different colors. They will spray water down. Kids can, can run through them and, um, they, they have a ball in those also. Um, and everything else from about midway out that rainbow line to the end is gonna be a splash pad, uh, just like what we have down at, down at, uh, the playground, uh, at Wesley's playground. Um, these will be deck mounted. Um, they're, they're cost-effective. Uh, basically they, they spray up in the air. Kids will play in there without actually being in the pool itself. Uh, and that's, that's a, a very large area uh, to be, uh, considered for a, for a splash pad. Um, and those are various types of, of different heads that, that do different things with the water. And all of that water, uh, that will be sloped just enough to get the water to flow back to the beach area that will go back down to the pool and we can, uh, circulate all of that, uh, all of that water. Uh, we'll be able to turn this water over in about an hour. So if there is an accident, um, you're talking about shutting down for, uh, as, as it stands right now, forty-five to fifty minutes and we'll be able to open it right back up, uh, once we get the pouring level up and everything will be filtered through. Um, we looked to, uh, the, the big pool was gonna be a little bit more than what, what we had, uh, first estimated. So we're looking at some cost savings. So we're gonna move the pumps that will actually run all these water features into, into the building side. Uh, we've got a, a utility room that's, that's basically just an open room in, in, uh, in the bath house. So we're gonna move all that, that plumbing into that room. My girls will be able to cut the water features on and off without having to go down into the main pump room. Um, so it's, it's gonna be, uh, more effective for us, but it's also gonna be a whole lot cheaper. We're not gonna have to run plumbing all the way down, all the way down to the pump room. And, uh, the main pool, that's, that's pretty much everything with it. The, the main pool, competition pool, uh, it's gonna have the same exact footprint as what it has now. We're gonna get a new flash job out of it. And, uh, the biggest change will be, uh, the gutter system. Uh, right now we have a skimmer system and skimmer systems are, what can I say, they're outdated. Um, that pool was built in the seventies and that was the thing to do then. This gutter system will enable us, even though we spray plaster on the deck, we won't lose any depth due to the water level will be at deck level now. Uh, the, the gutter system is a, is a stainless steel system. That water level is one inch below the, the gutter system. It'll go over into the, into the gutter. There'll be one pipe that goes down into the, into the room and one type, one pipe that returns. So the plumbing will be less also.
And just to give us a visual, I think you were telling me that where you walk into the pool now, the, the water level has been six, six inches.
Yeah, six, eight inches below, below the deck. Now it's gonna be one inch.
It'll be left with, basically.
Yeah, yeah, you won't be able to tell.
So competition wise, that's still good.
Competition's great. You'll be able to do your kickflips at, at the other end, even though we sprayed new plaster on the, on the floor. Um, we lose no depth.
We're not gonna get that seventh lane.
Uh, there, there's room, but, uh, there's no need for a seventh lane. Uh, is, is what we've been told by, by the swim teams.
Okay.
Um, is that, that the seventh lane is, is.
Word's spread.
So.
Yeah. Uh, that, that, that lane will be there for practice or warm-ups or, or anything else. But, but they say in competition that, that six lanes is, is all you need. So.
This looks good. Seth, you're good.
Uh, but like I said, I should have the, the plans, um, hopefully by the end of this week, if not the very first of next week, that will be a, a, a biddable plan with all the, the specifications as far as, as far as the pool goes. And, uh, Mr. Ritter's here to go over what we have in the building.
Regarding the building, uh, we are basically, there's a thirty-two hundred foot pool house building that's out there in concession building. We're not touching the concession building. What we're doing is gutting is not the right word for it, but, but pretty much removing a lot of what's happening on the inside of that current building facility and updating it. Similar to what the young man's gonna do with graveyard, similar to what we're doing with the veterans, we're gonna honor our past. We're gonna take some of this past from the early nineteen seventies and actually make it.
It's not.
Um, one of the things when you walk through that facility, it doesn't make you, there is no privacy in there for the boys or the girls. The compartments that they have in there, don't have doors, don't have gates. Shower stalls don't have any, uh, privacy issues. A lot of the walkways are never. Uh, the boys locker room's a big open room with hooks on the walls. Well, we're changing that. Uh, one of the other things that I had a son that was in swimming this summer, one of the other things that you do is give that for a daughter. My daughter has to go through the girls locker room. I go through the boys' locker room and we meet on the other side. She gets caught by somebody in that locker room and they're copying. Well, dad's standing there waiting and waiting and waiting. Dad disappeared for this part. We relocated it so that there's a walkway right through the middle of it. We walk through the existing opening. We can go straight on through. We will actually walk all the way through and then go back into the girls locker room or back into the boys locker room.
So there, there is, there is entrance from the foyer to the locker, correct?
Well, it, it's going to be an exit.
Oh, I got you, got you, got you.
We're, our plan is to have that locked so that when I come in, I have to walk all the way through. Here's my admin area now, which is currently the boy shower area. We're opening from the other side. That makes me walk by, I get my cat, my dooms, my bees to get in. When I get past that, then I can go back into the locker room and use them. I come back out to the pool. If my son or daughter, I come dressed for the pool, we go straight on through. Captain Pedro's log, pool deck's down here. Um, we have to have means of escape so that once we're in here, we can get back out that way for, for emergency use. But we've done that. This is the material room that Seth had talked about trying to get somebody pumped in. There's currently some water heaters in and there's currently a sink in there that we need to cut the slab to redo some of the plumbing work anyway. On this from nineteen seventies, floor drains aren't big enough. Uh, the plumbing lines are horrible. We're fixing all that. We're replacing all that. Uh, everything in there right now is exposed nationwide. So what we're, our plan is to cut into that base screen, take our plumbing pipes to the, in the core of that existing base screen, we can patch that base screen and then we're gonna wait until the pool comes up. So when it's all said and done, we haven't had to furt off walls. We haven't had to lose space. It is still cleanable. It is still ceramic tiles and all of it, so sealed this. One of the biggest pieces we're trying to do is the floor. It is then sealed and stained concrete and it's, you know, slick. How do you fix that? One of the things that we're trying to do is how, how do you TV blast it and then try to put tile on it and get enough smoke to the house so it's open to our new drains. Well, there's a product out there that's called Dry Deck that is an additive. It's an interlocking tile system. We can get different colors, we can do it in, will really make this a lively place. It sets on top. It's a drain. It's, when these pieces stick together, you can, you can pressure wash it and the pieces don't go flying.
And you can, you can take those up.
You can take them up.
If you're not, yes.
They can come in, in, uh, twelve-inch squares. They can come in three foot by twelve-foot sheets. They can, a lot of different things. Well, one of the things, I've got a full set of the drawings here, but one of the things that we're doing is we're taking one of these colors, one of the colors runs straight through. That defines where the path is. There's another color that is running through an egress path, if you will, through the boys locker room or through the girls locker room. I tell my daughter, you stay on that red line. I said, I mean you on the other side. Don't leave the red line. They do that in school. They know how to find the other side. So we're actually putting lockers. We've got about, uh, thirty, sixty, we've got a hundred and twenty lockers for the boys, a hundred and twenty lockers for the girls. Three tiers, twelve inches, a hundred and twenty-four inches tall. So they have that.
They lock them, they lock them like a board.
The patron brings their own lock. You know, I mean, worried about cutting them off if they get, if they get forgotten. But there are, uh, dressing cupboards. You're familiar with, uh, bathroom stalls in a multi-user bathroom facility with the toilet partitions. We're building a lot of toilet partitions. There'll be a solid door. The door will close. It can be latched and, and worked inside. There's accessible ones with benches. There's smaller ones that can actually use. The boys has four, the girls has six. Uh, there are four shower stalls, one of which is accessible in the girls locker room that we didn't have before. We have, you know, we have a shower stall in the boys locker room and then similar to what's there now is a game shower area with four heads and a large area. We've relocated. Uh, part of that is the correct and upsize the plumbing that should be in there is now being done. A lot of slab cut work, but that is something that's very easy to do. It's gonna be covered with this flooring product. So it isn't a tough, difficult task of patching and repairing. You won't see many of the patches. It is a good thing. Um, wainscoting will come to the toilet partition height. So it's either gonna be wainscoting where we had it cut past the wall or we've got partition that will, that will lock it off. The only other thing that we're doing, we're, we are certainly, uh, we're doing the sidewalk to get out the empty parking spaces. It is too steep right now. We're elevating. There is a public restroom that is cemented, they're not part of the pool house, but it's in the pool house structure. Those doors are too narrow now. We're widening those doors and raising that so that it's accessible.
Those doors are twenty-four.
There's two, two inches wide now. They will be thirty-six. There's a four inch step. So all of that's gotta disappear to make those accessible for the rest. Now that's for the rest of the parking lot. Basketball courts, picnic pavilion and all that, we'll, we'll be using those. So where are we doing the sidewalks there? Are we doing the sidewalks down, all the way down to the accessible parking spaces that are in the current parking lot? There's a culvert down there that is a logical place to come to. We've got point A, we're going to point B. We'll have a sidewalk around. We'll have a sidewalk which is gradual to get from those two things. Um, the only other thing that we were doing was, this is that concession building, it's gonna stay as is. We were gonna build a roof structure connecting the two boats. That will be a permanent structure that will give some shape. Right now, people go out there and they pull up their pop-up T and Bs and, uh, during the swim meet or something like that, you can't, certainly you're gonna get canopies all over the building. That's been happening. But this will be a place that even when storms come up in short order, someplace for the kids to hide.
So you can access that from the pool side, not from the other side?
It is fenced in from the other side. So it's not yet, not accessible. There's an area that is just gonna be a cover area that the kids can hide underneath the rain. It gets very, very, very loud in this room when there's a, um, a storm comes along and everybody runs into that pool house. There's kind of a soft wall in the place so it gets very loud. This flooring will help, you know, and some of the other angles and, and things like that will help to spur some of that noise. We're pulling off the entire ceiling. We're doing the lights, all that stuff that will make this, uh, it'll make it colorful by using different colors of these tiles and things like that. And certainly, uh, will make this.
What is, ceilings?
Thirty-eight feet. That's all we've got.
Thirty-eight feet, yeah.
Eight foot four inches. But it's, right now it is flat, ain't it lively with some trim pieces up. When that's all, or come down, we're gonna put most of this, some sheet rock up there on furring strips. So it will be more durable. You're not gonna hose the ceiling down, but you will be able to hose the walls and you'll certainly be able to hose the ceiling.
What about some kind of sound important material on the ceiling? You thought about that?
Well, it is so loud. Moisture is, is the problem. That there's going to be moisture in here and you start putting, a lot of times they'll put carpet or they'll put something like that on there.
Milding.
It will. Um, the compartments and all that will help because there will be different areas that that noise generated in a locker room, kids screaming or kids screaming. You know what? That's kids having fun. That, that's almost a good thing, you know? And when you're spending time in there, you're really, the, the hardest part honestly is in a storm. You're just waiting for that thunder to go away. And you're hoping that sooner or later that thunder will stop so that we can get back out in the open air where I don't get the echo. But anyway, where we're at tonight, if these documents are done, ready to go out to bid, our purpose of the meeting tonight is to get authorization to send them out to bid and to get this. Um, I, I know of four or five open general contractors commercially licensed all that are willing to do this. And our, our goal is to find out some instructions as to how we need to go about sending this out to get some competitive bids. Have it answering questions that you may have in terms of, uh, how we go. And I understand what our, what our goal is, is to get the directions as to, you know, send us off to public bid, finding right contractors, but, you know, are licensed and qualified to do so. so? No, we're.
Say.
To get four or five bids.
Say number two. Yeah, we'd, we'd like, we'd like to keep this work.
There are certainly in the economy, there are several that are places that I've talked to that are willing to do so. There is one, I think, we sold in Silver that does a lot of work globally and employs a lot of local people.
I've, I've had several calls myself. I, I'm like Ronnie, I, I think we can try to keep this work global here.
But I'll, obviously, I don't.
Being up to a point, but the, the, they were covered by first contract laws, which may restrict our ability to.
Statute one point three, statute one twenty-nine requires a project of this size to be advertised to bid generally. Of course, any local contractor who has the skill and expertise to do this job will be authorized with that bid in, but a preference for a local contractor simply because they're local, a local contractor is not.
But, but you've got the advantage of local contractors have that they are local, if they live here, the people.
The question, they, they.
Their best expense.
Is that a bond?
Anything else, so.
Was that be bonded?
Yeah.
That's one I heard a lot of.
Listen to the pool house. That's just the pool house. We don't have, we have.
Bonds are really difficult. At any time now, with very few people writing bonds since nine eleven, of course, and, uh, bonds are very expensive and we work those, they just don't have that money laying around a lot of the contracts.
A lot of bond claims beg of bond companies to hurt, so they revise how they.
They get their money back.
Is there no longer dollar value or do, is it, tell, tell the lower per dollar value that the bonding is option?
You, uh, I mean, by my understanding is this project is a warrant, so that doesn't affect.
I don't, I don't know where that number is, but I, I don't, for this individual proportion of it, it's an interior renovation of three thousand square. So, uh, we can talk about where.
Yeah, I'd be, I'd be happy to do, I mean, if you're gonna be bidding these two things separately.
And we are, and we'll be two separate bids.
Then there may be some.
The group that I'm talking about in terms of this pool house renovation, not to do the pool itself.
It depends on what the, what the final estimate comes out to be, if it's within the certain amount of less than what the state factors require, who may have some flexibility on that.
Who needs to go ahead and let this board authorize Tom to go ahead and bid locally and see where they come in at, would that be double work?
Or you just bid locally, put it up with public bids, which means anybody who, who knows us up for bid.
Would have to be, uh.
And submit a bid.
I think to the extent that the, for example, the interior renovation, it's, if it's anticipated, I believe the number is three hundred thousand dollars.
We're hoping to bid.
Well, we might be able to, we could look at this too, is, uh, the, uh, three qualified contractors on it. We did that with the, uh, all the scope.
What are you anticipating?
My anticipation is in two hundred and twenty to two hundred and fifty thousand.
Maybe able to do in formal bids. The number is now.
Some three hundred thousand, under three hundred thousand dollars, you can do in formal bids.
I think, I think they've raised that to five hundred. They're gonna need to double check that, but I, I was thinking three hundred is well on, and I saw five.
But what Thomas said is all three hundred, three hundred.
Yeah. I'm sure, I've got, there's no way. Did that one?
We can do in formal bids.
That's exactly what you concur.
We are gonna do them separately.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll, this bid, bid and then you will bid the pool, the pool itself, the water part is gonna be a separate bid.
Yeah, and, and you can do that so long as you're not doing it for the purpose of abating the intended statute, I think it's very.
They're not doing it because we don't have the specs.
That's not, we're not doing it. Because it's different.
It's too different, it's too different.
We talked, I talked with Seth about this very early, part of the contractor that's gonna bid on the building here is not gonna bid on this pool.
They don't have the expertise.
And vice versa, I had a guy, in fact, one of the calls I got was a guy who does pools, I think he called you too, uh, and he said, I have no desire to be in on.
No interest in the pool.
Bathhouse, but I'll bid on the pool part. And vice versa, luxury is not to.
No, we're not. We can't physically do it and we don't want to delay the work on. We don't have the specs.
This will be two bids, two projects.
It's insane.
That's an easy.
I think Mr. Ritter, right, of course, there is good swap authorization to go ahead and do this, bid this, so you know exactly how much it's gonna be. If we can do it through in formal bids and so forth, and encourage local contractors to do that within those guidelines, I think that'll be good for everybody, but, uh, we'll need first of all the job authorization for us to go and bid on.
Mr. Chairman, would it be, would it be in line to say that we can authorize the county manager to liaise with Mr. Ritter for the purpose of submitting the bid out for a pool now? Would that be a?
That is motion if it's appropriate.
It is.
Okay.
No, second.
Second.
We have, we have a motion by Commissioner Coopers and the second by Commissioner Haven, do you take that, sir?
We didn't know that.
Second by Commissioner Haven to authorize the county manager to work in conjunction with, uh, Mr. Ritter. And I would.
Because I had one thing to that, to my motion and my second, God will go with me at friendly moment, to the, to the extent possible that we try to go down the end form of bid path, if, if it looks like the number's gonna allow us to do that. Would that be a, if we are.
That, that keeps our bids low.
It gives our local contractors a, a better chance to bid on the project.
That's what I'm trying to do. Okay, and Mr. Haven, you accepted that, admitted your motion, so. You've heard the motion? All in favor, six to five, saying I, that I opposed? That motion passes you down and says so.
Seth, Tom, thank you very much.
And before we leave, before we stand with the Highlands.
I was gonna bring that up. When we get ready to bid this pool, Jack, I gave you the Highlands stuff, we need to make sure those two go together, I don't.
We've got an.
Highlands to get lost in the show.
Repair work in the Highlands, I think we got that, we wanna put that as an add-on.
An add-on to the pool. Doesn't affect you guys' specs, we're just gonna add it on.
Mr. Chairman, before, before you leave, this, this, we, we have a layout of this, we just don't have the written specifications for it. Or you wanna wait till you get the written specifications for it before you throw the contract, I mean, the design to go out to bid, or do you wanna go ahead and go out to bid when, when, when his H two O expert applies the specifications to produce that?
Wait, wait, approve it, that'd be fine.
Well, if you can, if you can do that, uh, the, this is the design. We just don't have the, 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 the specifications that make.
That'd be the case, Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that we also authorize the county manager, when the specifications are received, to combine the specifications for our pool with the requirements to make the repairs to the Highlands pool and then liaison to submit those out for bid.
Okay. Commissioner Haven seconded that motion as well.
Just one question, Mr. Chairman, on the specifications when they come, of course, I guess you're the most knowledgeable, so who will review the specifications, what I want to say?
I, I will, I will review them and I'll also run them by, uh, Chain Bell for the Health Department to make sure that everything is.
I've not got somebody that'll prove it.
Well, the, our engineer is.
The architect.
So you have, there is an engineer.
The architect that designed this, the architect engineering firm that designed this.
Yeah, we'll pay for it.
Okay. Motion. Motion and second, any others to schedule? And Mr. Ritter, this is on the pool part and it would be, it'll, it'll be this design that we've seen. And, uh, any others to schedule? All papers say I, I oppose, that motion passes unanimously, so. Gentlemen, we appreciate you guys working together, Mr. Ritter, you've worked with the.
Seth, again, thank you for all your work and thank you for you guys for supporting our effort, I appreciate it.
And Seth, if you please, I know you'll do this, but just so it gives the main plug, you, you, just because of involving that, look, as our liaison, he's been very, he's been very hands-on with this and I feel.
We might, we might be able to talk for about four hours here coming on Friday.
Yes, I did. But we do appreciate, uh, Mr. Ritter's good, good design and looking forward to getting a bid today. Uh, gentlemen, meet the hour forty minutes, give us an entire break.
Seth, gee, Mr. Gentlemen, I'm ready.
Okay. Let's take, okay, I've got, I think we'll get consensus, we'll break, we'll recess for about five, ten minutes. We will reconvene. Under, uh, under new business, um, we have a request for contract and franchise, franchise extension. We have Anita Hamsters here with J V disposal. We recognize her, Chris, or you, her, okay? Anita Wells, I think you're here.
Chairman, Mr. Horton, thank you for allowing me to be here tonight. I am requesting, um, a side view extension on my franchise. I'm currently a three and a half years. And to have a business plan, it's kind of difficult at three and a half years. You go to the banks and they don't, they don't wanna talk to you at three and a half years. So, um, I would like to request an extension on the, an admission of five.
Any, any questions? I think we need, Chester, we need to refer that to you for.
We would review its documents today and just kind of try to understand, uh, one of the agreements may expire two thousand and sixteen, is that right, Chris? Which, which one is that?
So I'm assuming they both.
It's, no, it's exclusive franchise agreement, two thousand and sixteen.
What month is that?
January.
January.
Mr. Chairman, I'd recommend that, uh, we take Anita Hamsters, uh, good private services from, that, take her request under advisement and, uh, matter of county attorney, review all the documents and see the county manager come back and do the.
I'm returning.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I do have a question. I'm a little old on the board, so I've gotta ask, how long have you, how long have you been in business or had this franchise?
Since ninety-six.
So, two thousand and six, oh, sixteen. How are, Chris, you owe your product, how are rates charged or how is that figured?
Well, the rates are charged, uh, they, the, I guess it was charged and then the rates are charged based on the landfill fees.
Is that something that we oversee or is that something that you, you do or is that something Chris oversees or?
Well, Chris, you know, if the books are open, you see the rate.
That's you guys approved.
You approved your rates.
The fee structure, I guess that's what I'm asking. So I understand there's some landfill fees and there's some fees that you're obviously making your money is, but, but you're coming to my house to pick up my, my bar rates then.
So yes, everything is approved by the board.
Okay.
And there, there are two, and I'm, I'm like Jimmy, this is, this is new to me too, that I wasn't obviously involved in the last time you did, you did this last.
Uh, we did it in the Sam, in 'oh eight.
So that was my time too.
To let you know, this is the first time I've ever been here during any discussion. So I'll try to catch up.
Could you guys pick up the trash from the convenience centers? Like the Highlands Road and the, the, the one out on Carson, Polyspring, you know, you, you service those. In addition to that, you have doctors in business location, which is a private, so there are two, is there two agreements here?
Well, there's, there's two agreements, but they're not cut out exactly like you described.
Okay.
The, the exclusive franchise is one document and then her contract for service with us is a separate contract, maybe not entirely separate, but what goes into the, what goes in, the fee structure that goes into franchise that's approved by the board is, uh, what she charges for we to pick up, what she charges based on size, uh, container, all those fees are set by you guys. Seth, do you also approve the fee structure under the other contract of what she charges us for pools from the convenience centers and for the transfer section?
To a second, for, for basis.
And it's always been treated as a, as the exclusive franchise, it's never been dealt with on a two, two contract basis.
It may be two documents, but I think what you say is, is it's been an exclusive arrangement, is that higher sign?
They're not, they're not distinct documents, it's just two, two different, the agreements happen to be different.
Do you plead that for bid, Jimmy, plead that for bid?
Uh, I would assume when the initial, way back when the initial law of franchise was established, um, I don't know, I believe I read something that a fran, an exclusive franchise has a thirty year life. I think I saw.
Up to.
Up to.
The general statutes were modified up too long back, I don't think that's, probably nineteen ninety-one, um, and that allowed for it to be a much longer contract if you, if you, you could go as many as thirty years, right?
And I think, I don't know, to, to, to the notion of competitively bidding, the contract terms, any change to that came from y'all, y'all approval, so, I mean, y'all have kind of got it with the entrances through, at, at J V's request, but y'all have approved any entrances.
Do you, uh, service any residents out of county or do you just make it?
Just make in county. Exclusive, make in county. I do nothing out of making county.
I've got a question, it's a lot of different answers.
Fourteen.
I think, I don't know how many people are aware of the history of this all, with development in, you know, out here, Arizona, coming to this, but, back, uh, in the, in the eighties, we only paid for it, not person, who was picking up barbers, shit, people's houses and this, and then Bob left, Bob left, he was a rich hole, I guess franchisee from the county that watched, and he operated several years and then, uh, maybe he passed away or his son did it over or something.
He passed.
He passed away and then, and then that's when y'all, uh, your husband bought his franchise out, the county pretty much transferred that and he's been, um, been with y'all since nineteen ninety-six.
I, I would prefer it.
Yeah. Give everything.
If I'm vague, I wanna get used to. It'd be another where I get in touch with you. It may be that I hate to put you in that situation. I think I've rounded up most of it.
Are these comfortable?
Yes, I believe it is.
Yeah.
I asked her first.
Oh, wait, so that's good.
So, missing, I.
Can we do that?
It was a last minute thing.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. All right, Chester, I've just gotten the consensus of all five board members to do that, so.
Okay.
We're not, making clear, we're not voting on anything, we, we just concur to have you do some research and come back to us, uh, with a recommendation from our county.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Hammond.
Thank you.
We have Jimmy Ting, little Jimmy, thank you for your patience. We have Jimmy here for the approval of fire district map, um, for Nana Hala, number eight key, that I can get that for us. Thank you, Mr. Hammond.
Uh, you're not aware, uh, Nana Hala had built a substation, uh, it's been finished for about two years and they just now have got enough equipment to put in there. Uh, and what this is, I need, uh, I've already sent this map off to Raleigh, to the Office of State Fire Marshal, they've already approved it. And, uh, I'm gonna need to get your approval on this. Uh, the response area on the map is not changing, that's the, the big red line, uh, that's, that's gonna stay the same. What's gonna change is just above the Nana Hala fire and the rescue substation, there's a broken line there, that was the old existing six miles.
We're gonna, you, um, um.
We go by the rescue station, right, there's a broken line.
See that?
See the broken line? That is the old, that's the existing six mile district.
Which is where you have.
Where you get the fire protection. To get you a protection on the five miles. Everything above that was, that takes a price in. And so people's insurance was higher if they could get in. So now this substation will just about get everything down there, maybe a quarter of a mile right there at the county line. It's not going to get, get that. Uh, and is it going to affect somewhere around two hundred and fifty people, uh, and businesses? And so, get their insurance very close.
How far are they apart, Jimmy? The, the main, the main and the sub, and the substation?
They're, they're about five miles, somewhere like that. The, this is just, if you know where the Nana Hala school's at?
Oh, yeah.
It's about a quarter of a mile just above the Nana Hala school.
Jimmy, is it the heavy red line that will be the, uh, adjusted fire distance?
Uh, the yellow, the yellow, see the broken line?
Yes, just the yellow.
Yeah, just the yellow. That, that is the response area, the, the heavy red line is the response area, that's what they get.
So the area is not yellow.
About ten foot mile of, of.
And we're going to call the area in yellow the Nana Hala five mile?
Uh, that, that's one, yes. The, the purple, uh, there's a little bit of purple in there, that's some six mile. All this white area, uh, that's mostly forest service.
So, so what you're needing the county to do is designate the Nana Hala five mile area as shown on this map and the Nana Hala six mile as shown on this map. Uh, and the boundaries of all those two, uh, districts, uh, or insurance grading, is that right? And gentlemen, that's specifically authorized under the general statute.
And, and, you know, if I, if I get the approval tomorrow, I'll be, uh, send the, uh, Office of State Fire Marshal, uh, request a, for them to come and inspect it, thank you.
Battle for the engines and battle for, I guess, let me answer one stupid question, I mean, I, I, just because I'm an idiot, I guess. I look at the, I look at the five mile, is, is the reason that the, the white road part there is not included in yellow, even though it's obviously close to that? Because there's nothing there.
Forest, right.
Okay. So, so even though there's road there, it's all forest plan, so you don't worry about that.
Yeah, even.
That's why you said, I, I, I just didn't, for some reason, it didn't, didn't register, but I, I got you now. Yeah, well, I appreciate your effort on this, I know Brian does, I know he's worked hard over there to, uh, to get this thing going, they've done a good job. On, on their behalf, I want to thank the board for supporting about a year ago when they, when they went out there on a limb to get those, those extra trucks so that they could open this thing. They, they did it for this exact reason, this, this is.
I see two.
Yes, just before you get to the county line, do you want us to rope?
I know where Jeff, I'll put it on that.
Well, uh.
That goes to the county line, right?
Yeah, this is actually, doesn't hurt to black bird grill, that's some of that.
That's the long leg.
No, basically, they did it right. Anything in the yellow.
That's where we don't.
They're not in five or six miles.
Mr. Chairman, I'll leave it for you.
Second. A motion by Commissioner Tate, second by, you've got the, Mr. Bill, to approve this in discussion.
I'd like to thank everybody that worked on that evening, Brian and all his group, Mount Haley. Get the substation ready, appreciate you.
And this, this is going to mean a lot to residents of there, and savings on their insurance.
I heard, I talked to one insurance agent and they said he was worth a hundred and fifty to two hundred dollars, you know, that they could save.
Two hundred.
Do the math. All right, all in favor of motion, signify by saying aye. Motion, that motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
It's good to see you, bro.
Uh, I think we, Mr. Attorney, you advised me to skip number C.
My understanding, uh, that, uh, that we've got a little follow-up work with each, the, uh.
Little courses.
CDC.
Okay, all right, that sounds good. Uh, and D was eliminated and replaced with another D, which is Jack Betcher's removal of the sewer easement for Randy Cooper.
Yeah, uh, this came to my attention here a couple of weeks ago. This Cooper tried to sell the property and, uh, the, uh, Facebook buyer did a little research and found out there was a sewer easement on the property. It's a very small piece of property. And with the sewer easement, it would be hard to actually build a house on the property. So, uh, they called and they asked about it and, uh, of course I told them that that sewer line had been relocated and it's now runs from industrial park on Corlaine Highway down to Old Town Road. And on, uh, through bad values was a residential plan, something ten or twelve years ago. And so, uh, he, uh, would like to point his request on his, uh, and that, uh, the board, um, release his easement. And I've, I've called the county attorney about it and, uh, that's, that's a simple matter, I think, as far as a quick claim on.
I, I believe that the facts support that, uh, indeed there's not a need for that easement for the current project or any immediate future projects that are planned. And indeed, uh, this project, if I understand from Jack, is, is another plan.
Yeah.
The easement is not needed off.
Change to, to various reasons back before I came back to the, the county and, uh, the chances of the sewer line going out probably is probably around this. It may happen, but it may be generally fifteen years now.
Appreciate it.
Anytime it's possible, uh, we need to much with it, the other potential fire, if it should, uh, have that easement taken off.
Make a quick claim, D, probably, but under those circumstances, it may, you know, indeed, uh, they, they have been, that'd be a big, big one.
There are several of them out there, we, we've actually taken one or two, uh, Bill and everyone, we've taken off.
Yes, you know.
We've taken off that.
Ramsey.
Taken off Ramsey. We haven't gone back and asked everyone if they want to take it off, especially next year, I'll see if they come up. And, uh, others, we want to have, they're like, it's, uh, the basic, uh, tenants of the agreement, when the, uh, the right of discussion for sewer line is that they can be eligible for a free sewer cap. Obviously, if there's no sewer line there, a free sewer cap doesn't do them a lot of good. And so, uh, they'd like to have that restriction taken off their deeds so that they can use for other purposes.
If, uh, would it be appropriate to say, is it, we just, we just make available, should they come back to ours, or if they want to, they please do, if they could, I'll make it how safe.
Uh, well, I think it really needs to be approved on occasion, I think, but we can certainly streamline that.
But, but I, I agree with what he's saying, I think the spirit of what he's saying is, why don't we contact them and, and at least let them know that we're doing this.
We certainly do.
Yeah, I think that's fair. You okay with that, will you do that?
Uh, and, and, and everybody does it, so one at a time, every several months, maybe you can do them all at the same time.
And I, I think we should do this, I mentioned these guys, everything about, about this and some other issues, and I, I don't know, we can do. A motion being made. I'd like a motion. Second, motion, having second appeal, in discussion. All in favor, say aye. I oppose that motion, passing unanimously. The next thing would be, out of twelve, you have a new business memorandum of agreement with North Carolina Wildlife Resources Commission for apprentice bridge access area, Mr. County Planner.
You got your maps.
Well, well, we've got a man who's charged.
While he's passing this out, I give the board a little bit of background, back in the eighties, Tennessee Valley already had money available to do recreation projects and the service area. And back then, the county took advantage of that and put a new access point in here on that apprentice bridge road. Uh, that point has been used by several people over the years, but it's including our county attorney, uh, he was a, uh, a high actor, we didn't know that. But, uh, it, it, it is in our need of improvement and maintenance. And, uh, Matt has been able to contact the, uh, uh, Wildlife, it was the Wildlife Resources.
Wildlife.
And, uh, they've come up with funds, uh, to renovate this area, um, to provide a four to five avenue. So I think you can take it there.
Sure.
Um, like Mr. Ford said, we met with the North Carolina Resources Commission, um, they drafted a memorandum of agreement. The reason that they're willing to approve the access is to improve public fishing access on the Tennessee River, that's true. They also want to increase the recreational opportunities for citizens and also to improve angler access everywhere. Uh, if you look at your agreement, it should be repolished, not in the papers I have, probably repolished. What the Wildlife Commission is going to agree to do is design, construct, step down boatslot, let's discuss in a minute. Resurface the gravel parking area at the access, order all construction materials, provide personnel for the construction of that access and the boatslot. And also the resurfacing the gravel parking area. They will be responsible for obtaining all the environmental and building permits, conducting any future structural repairs, replacing the material. They will also, uh, are willing to agree to make that as part of the routine patrol, uh, with their law enforcement officers. You're asking yourself, what's the county doing? In turn, what they're asking, and what I'm asking you to agree to, is cooperate with the commission and upgrade to the French Bridge access area. Ensure proper recognition is given to the commission and all press releases, brochures, advertisements, any kind of economic development resource, if you promote this. We would also be asked to permit unrestricted access by the general public without a fee. Maintain the agreement with PVA to occupy and use the property as public recreational access area. And the last one, sorry, Carl's the last, I don't know. Carl's the last.
Text you back, can you hear?
I will, I don't know. The other thing is where the agreement really affects Macon County is to provide routine maintenance and upkeep of the access area, including mowing, weeding, trash pickup, primarily April through October. Now, if you're asking yourself, what are they going to do, let's look at the map for just a minute. The first page, it's going to buy six parking places. They're going to redo the entrance into the access area and the two long spaces are for trailers, bugling apparatus, stuff like that.
That's on, that's on access, compared to parking place.
Correct, the access is going to be a little square down the right-hand corner, sort of in the river.
Right, it's a real important piece of this puzzle because the grade is real steep right there.
Currently, it's, it's about an eight-foot drop and they have some wooden steps that washed out before.
Washed out, you, you got a.
It's really damp.
You got a bank washing away there right there.
If you have your truck and a, and a trailer with a boat in the back, you can, you can back it, this looks like you slide your boat down that center piece.
Correct, you'll go to the second page. This upper view, the isometric view is what the boat will, will look like. So basically, you'll pull into the parking lot, back it to this concrete slab, and then slide your canoe or small John boat down this center point.
And stand, so then you walk down inside.
In the water again. Another important piece of this that I might throw in is, Clark Chapel Fire Department uses this as a water point for structure fires and stuff like that. This would be a great asset for them as far as, you know, their pumps and personnel issues, as I said.
So really going to muddy house bus and just some upkeep?
Some upkeep. And.
They really turn the bus around, they.
Were they, right, currently, we're getting a fire truck in there? Um, and if you look back at the first page, as long as the first two long parking places that are located forty foot, as long as both of those are not occupied at the time, I think you can pull a bus in there and back in, or pull in and back in one of those places, pretty easy.
Whether you can, if you look past, if you, if you pull in toward the, where you unload the boat, that's not a parking space right above it, that's a, that's a key clear area where you.
Right.
So you could pull right there and then you got, look like you got to pull in, one of those, it says seventeen feet.
Right.
Pull there as well.
The only thing I'm thinking about is talking to Scott, maybe extend that just a little bit, so you have an easier turn.
Seventeen, yeah, yeah. Man, I see that it is for twenty-five years. What if we, and odds are pretty good, we'll have a flood in twenty-five years and it takes out that area again? Will they come back, and sort of stipulates what the county has to pay that we call, what about, will they come back and?
It says they're conducting a future structural repairs such as replacing boards, railings, and step-down boatslot and regrading, found a parking area if it's needed.
Does that mean that they'll rebuild it if they have to?
I think it does.
You think it does?
Um, I think it's going to be.
You think so, Chester?
The, the repair, the commitment.
Well, if we haven't, haven't made the flood, then just wipe that place out, will they come back and rebuild it?
Well, I think it'd be subject to what floods they have later. You know, you dealt with the same.
Let me ask this question anyway, would, would it?
Not anyway.
That's clear.
It'd be that they exercise their right to divorce from it.
And like you.
They can't rebuild it, but.
Both, uh, we're not on, both are in. Both parties have that right.
I'm agreeing with you.
We do that right.
The counties are already on the look for that, uh, make so that, anyway, those put in and agreed back then in the eighties, the county maintained all the maintenance and all that, right?
I was going to say, it's fallen in the state of dish repair, so if they come and do it, it's, it's a.
It's actually.
The fire department's a little for me.
Yeah, that's, that's really.
It basically is going to extend the use of the greenway some too, because this of course is up. Kind of funny, the river runs, uh, south to north, actually, yeah.
But, but it's, uh, that's, that'd be a good put-in point to get out.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, that's a great place to put in.
How far is that? They'll make, they'll make. I've got a question on this up here.
Okay.
I know that, uh, nowadays, it seems like we're starting to pick up some commercial things going on, uh, kayak and community, things like that. And, uh, I sort of know a little bit of the way in my mind of, kind of, moving a little bit this in, sort of like this, those hikers. I know the Nana Hala outdoors, it draws people, and, and. At one point in time, one reason I asked about a bus turning around in there, would they be a problem if people put commercial businesses, take people, I know we're talking about this one over here, canoes right up here, uh, bus bridge and, uh, it was late in the Highlands. If a person wanted to have some sort of businesses, would they come in there and let people?
I don't think there would be as long as there wasn't permanent establishment on the property. And then drop them off, set a house down.
The reason I asked that, I thought if it was there, why would it start to turn around, take up a little height and my bus?
Right.
And, uh, I don't know exactly where this is, it's upstate, that's, that would make a difference. I ask you, I see it's possible. There's another tour, there's a big company for certain reasons.
I think anybody that have access to that, works for mine, works on, will set up an operation inside.
Right. And I think your name is, could be, could be county, uh, I think the fire department, one of my friends, and my brother, and maybe.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion, we approve, uh, the recommendation that's submitted and give the, the county manager authorization in the agreement with the North Carolina Wildlife Resources's condition is out.
We have motion, Mr. Bill, second by Cooper. All, in discussions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Owe?
Motion.
Thank you, Ed.
Mr. Smith, glad to have you, you were trying to call Mr. Mason while I was trying to talk to him.
A little meeting.
I was the only one talking, I said.
We're hoping to take you back to your business. Mr. Smith, you were dragged on earlier by Mr. Tate and others for your handling of the case, we'll go back through that and you can read the paper next to this.
Mr. Tate, very kind.
Uh, twelve E under D business, or I'm sorry, F would be, uh, I recognize Commissioner Bill. He is bringing to us an item of consideration to be a legislative goal for the North Carolina Association.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and the way you can do this, gentlemen, is one or the other. Uh, if, if with consensus of the board, I would recommend we do a letter from the chairman, uh, that has consensus of the board. Uh, this is about mental health funding. Uh, the three goals we had last year was seeking legislation to ensure adequate capacity, state funded acute psychiatric beds. Uh, we were successful, we got nine million dollars. Problem with that, they took another twenty million away from community-based services. That makes forty million in the last two cycles, in the last two budgets. So I would like to submit to this board that we, uh, submit, uh, a request and it goes to, uh, you know, we can submit the goal, that only is going to make the goal, but, uh, seek legislation to restore, uh, the forty million dollars in funding to, to community mental health services that has been deleted from the budget in the, in the past, uh, two cycles. So, uh, I would put that as a, as a request, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this life cycle, the twenty million dollars that was cut, to give you an idea, is three point six million to our area. We still struggle, as the sheriff can attest. Uh, this has nothing to do with the Medicaid waiver, don't get confused with that. Uh, the, the community health services, uh, we were told that we will not suffer another twenty million dollar cut. Matter of fact, I had a letter for, as to state that fact. That didn't seem to matter at the end of the day, so, uh, mental health continues to be a complicit accounting. We will exceed, not only what we've contributed to the LME, but we will exceed in the sheriff's budget over two hundred thousand dollars we predict by the end of the year. Uh, so, uh, I would put that, Mr. Chairman, as consensus of the board, uh, for discussion and, uh, and, and, and approve the consensus board that that be from the other from you, Mr. Chairman.
And just, just clarifying what Mr. Bill's asking for. These, these are legislative goals, we, we will be making this request to the legislature, we're making this request to North Carolina Association. County commissioners, who will in turn come up with generally about four to five bullet points for legislative goals.
They will go to the Health and Human Services Committee.
For next year.
That's right.
So this, this is something that's about, I don't know, eight months.
But our deadline is the seventeenth, uh, to get it to the steering committees. And, uh, so between now and the seventeenth, we craft our letter and, uh, we'll certainly hand deliver the letter and, and read it before it goes. I think you'll see this go out only from this county, uh, but from several other counties, but forty million dollars, uh, over the period of, uh, in, in that short period, you don't hit any department. And, uh, it's real hit to our area and when the manager team, if you want to speak to that, Mr. Man, you can start with.
I'd just say that, uh, that Mr. Bill mentioned that this resolution will go to the, um, Human Services Steering Committee, which is one of several committees that thanks my view of the, the residents of the service and some of the other committees and associations, but those committees meet and they put together recommendations which goes to a, um, uh, a big committee, which is the Legislative Goals Committee, and they put together an agenda for the general assembly and then you will have an open committee in January to begin with, count the state one legislative goal, this is a goal that's competing for the association. Where these things are actually voted on by most of the counties in the state. And what, what you're talking about is the fact that most of the legislative goals that the county, the association has supported, events associated with it, and, uh, this is a thing. But if you don't go through this process, then your chances of getting any amendments or changes are in low percentage in the state. And this way of legislation is, so the power of association behind it, you have a better chance of getting this done. Uh, Commissioner Bill said if you don't get this in by the seventeenth, Mr. Deadline, I would make the most, make an idea like this here for Johnson.
Yeah, and if you are marking the goals, you know, that, the legislative process where they're all about together and all the winter, is January twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth.
We got seventeen, that's what.
We got the seventeenth. So we'd like to get through it or not, get the letter, we'd like to have it our way before.
This is one of the things that, that the budget, that, that's owed before then.
And, and, and just to, just to follow up again, I hope to say that our board says we had a chance to meet, uh, with our folks from Region A and our, all of our local representatives. Who were in, uh, Webster recently to talk about the impact of the cuts and the help funding, uh, the services, the services that we provide, or not provide here in rural western Carolina. Three point six million dollar cut may not be a lock in fact for Lloyd County, but to here, it's just devastating, so, um, it, and I think they recognize there's a need there, but you've got to have more than, than what we're anxious to get that far apart, so.
But our walking clinic has been, has made significant difference, it would be much worse, I think, I think the sheriff will agree, if you didn't have a walking clinic emergency service. So those have been cut back and all the counties split out.
So one of the, one of the biggest, and I think the sheriff, Matt, Matt, Mr. Bill, will, will, will give you some real stories on how long it's taken to hold people in custody and find voluntary commitments, trying to get state beds and so forth available to them. It's, uh, it's not just an expense to the state, it's an expense to the county, to the sheriff's office, to their officers and so forth. And I know for a fact, personally, Mr. Bill has intervened on several occasions, tried to get that logjam open so they can get some of these cases taken care of, but, uh, it affects us more than, it affects our region more than other parts of the state.
How much we spend to make the county from your position?
Well, we, we send the LMEs locally, but until we make it one year, I think, I think it was sixty-seven thousand dollars, cut our part.
I'm just thinking it was like a hundred point.
It may be, you must split it up.
Well, it hasn't, our, our, our participation rate hasn't gone up in five or six years.
But then, uh, the sheriff's department is in the sheriff's department.
That's what I'm saying, what's all this been? Harder what they change, trying to balance state budget.
Well, they, they, they know, they balance the fire and so they balance it fine. Uh, but, uh.
I'm trying to think of more that may, I must be.
We're asking. Well, twenty million dollars, uh, they've cut forty million dollars out of in, in, uh, in the last two budgets, so.
Well, I think the issue with the, the number twenty, where that comes from is that we were assured that we would not receive.
We said the letter stating that.
And then it came anyway, and so what we're asking is, we're not asking for both twenties back, we knew the first one was coming. They said they weren't going to give us the second one and, and they did, so we're asking for that back. And I don't know, Mr. Chairman, if, if you need a motion or just consensus either way, but I'd be happy to make the motion if you need it or not, you have my consent as that.
What have you, what have you seen?
I think we would need, uh, probably need a little motion.
To speak as a board, I think.
If I'm going to write a letter on behalf of the board, I think we'd vote.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, write a letter to include restoration of the twenty million, the last twenty million dollar cut for mental health as a legislative goal for North Carolina Association.
Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second to that motion to restore the last twenty million dollar cut, not the, not the initial twenty million dollar cut.
That would never have happened.
And that this would be sent not to the legislature but to the North Carolina Association.
We'll start off with your Health and Human Services, but that's all.
Yeah. Any, any discussion regarding the motion?
Okay, we'll lay it one more time.
Another one that comes back. How much money do we need to make in?
You said it.
Well, we.
Actually, what was the fact?
Well, here the facts, well, the way it's set up on it, it's a little bit, you, all the money is combined in fifteen counties.
Right.
But out of that fifteen counties, out of twenty million, we took the three point six million dollar hit in fifteen counties. And to narrow that down to how it affects Macon County, uh, you have to look at what services were cut. And the list of those services, for instance, we wanted to get an opiate program started, uh,
prescription drugs.
That was one of the things, that was the first thing that was cut. Uh, uh, development of disabilities was cut. Uh, child services, uh, mental services were cut, I mean, there was a litany of about twenty different things that were cut, uh, to get to that.
I don't get it.
How much is that?
Well, I can't think off the top of my head, how much we actually need, hey, you don't know for a day today. We might have five in the ER tonight, we might have, we, give me a good example, we had a, we had a case in the ER, uh, it's a good example, sure.
What I'm asking is just right here, do we need one million dollars, the rest three thousand? Because I'm, I'm all for that state to have a budget down this close, don't seem like we have to. And I, but I don't want to say that I'm definitely sure. We're not going to have a week.
Well, but. I think it's important to understand that the twenty million dollars is not coming to Macon County. Twenty million dollars is a statewide cut, three point six million of which will come to our LME. And, and really because that was what was promised, was already budgeted. Now, how much specifically that is, I don't know. Uh, but what I am saying is that, that's what we're asking for. And I think that, that all we're asking is to restore the services that, when, when that money did not come, services had to be cut, they were valuable services. And if they restore the twenty million, then they'll probably restore the three point six, which means we'll probably be able to restore those services. That's what we're battling for, is to restore the services that we lost because of the twenty million dollar statewide cut that we were promised would not happen. And that's, that's what we're doing.
And I know it's part of balance, but, okay, but what I'm saying is we need that three point six here.
I mean, we need it in seventeen one. I mean, we're the only ones, and that's because maybe you have a commissioner that would just turn flip flops over our walk-in center. We, we, we thought we were on the right track and, uh, that the walk-in center were making a big difference. Uh, with the folks in Jackson, Cherokee, some other counties, uh, some have lost more services than others. Uh, but it's still a, uh, it's still a huge, huge problem and.
The biggest problem is the, is the element is the focus of your own facilities in the state.
Right.
To, to accommodate the people who need them and, and, uh, if you've got somebody in Macon that needs to be sent to a state facility, uh, they're put pretty down, they're like bad squat and you're out of eagle. So there, there are two issues here, one of them is the state not appropriate enough funding and expansion of the state facilities. The other is the drain on your local law enforcement officer. Sheriff gave you a, uh, an overview of that back in January and we did a media report. And I can't remember exactly how much money it figured it costs.
We're at seventy thousand now.
Yeah, just in that system, make the county dollars.
Make the county dollars, tax bill dollars.
We will hit two hundred thousand this year.
We had a case, uh, the sheriff department had a case where we had to have two counties. Because it was, uh, he was a very, uh, he had fixed some nurses and, and was having a real problem. So now you're paying two counties, uh, to sit over there, plus you had two others in the ER with a deputy each. Twenty-four seven, the average time now is about thirty-four hours.
They've had, but it's five in the ER at some point.
So it's, uh, it continues and if you keep, you keep cut, we've got to get on the front end somehow to keep these folks from being in law enforcement, that's the problem, that was what some of this money was going to go for.
I think a good example of what, where this will actually go, okay, what will actually happen. We're probably not going to get the twenty million dollars back. But we had a legislative goal a year or so ago to restore the lottery money, county law. Because we had that as a legislative goal, when the lottery cut came down to sixty million from a hundred million, they commit, the association was able to go in and say, wait a minute, our counties had a legislative goal, we want to restore this money, not cut it from a hundred to sixty. As a result, they, the legislature put that forty million dollars back and kept it at a hundred million dollars. If we had not had a legislative goal, if we had not long forward as an association and said, we want it restored, we'd be sitting there with sixty million dollars of lottery money statewide rather than a hundred million. That's the purpose of what we're trying to do here. We may not get the twenty million dollars, we probably won't, but at least we will plant the seed in our mind that we are united as counties and as association to not take in any more cuts and maybe restore some of that money if we can. We're not going to affect the budget, they can only do that in a row. That's what they get paid the big bucks for, and we can sure tell them what we think, and that's what we're doing there, at least in my eyes.
Let me, let me, in spirit of what Mr. Haiti's saying, I, if, if we were asking for the whole forty million back, I don't think I could, I could vote for it. As I agree, Ron, there are statements, if we were a three point five million dollar hole. And you, you're digging that kind of hole, one you got to quit digging and somehow you got to find a way to fill it back.
I would argue that, I would argue differently, that when you take forty, there's other places you can take it besides giving tax cuts to some places that they did. I'm arguing that, you know, when you penalize the people who have no voice, and that's what they did, I would argue that differently, Mr. Chairman.
Well.
The fact is, the fact is, they kept the forty million, they did, but.
We're asking.
And that happened.
That's right.
Which is, so.
Well, I'm kind of like this, I know some different things I like to mention, some of this stuff, but I told someone I'm going to pay big certain things on the cover. Pay which tires lots of oil in, I'm going to pay the paint, but anyway, go ahead.
No. Okay.
I don't know that, you think that, that, yeah, that, yeah, worth it.
Uh, did, did we get, did you make a motion?
I did, I said, I said.
You said, okay, and that was all discussion? All right, any, any other discussions? All in favor of authorizing me to write a letter, uh, requesting, uh, to, uh.
Requesting the association to make it a legislative goal to restore the twenty million dollars that was promised, but then pulled.
Which is the last twenty million dollars.
Exactly, last twenty million.
As long as I'm clear on that, I don't, I can't go into the whole thing about. Uh, yes, discussion. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes, you have a decision.
We're ready, but it's been noted that it was passed, and should be.
I'll head to the table. Well, I'm saying if you, if you guys get that, uh, get the wording, we'll be glad to do it. Um, you know, it's getting late, we're, we're doing well, we got the, uh, the consent agenda. Um, I always sort of like to buzz through this, if you guys want to, uh, discuss, we will, but we got amendments which you received in your packet of July tenth and July twenty-sixth. We have budget amendments, Lori gave us two, uh, by email today and or tonight, you should have those, which is budget amendment twenty-seven and twenty-eight.
Just, just briefly then, I think Bobby says you just got the, had a chance to look down, Lori can give you more detail on it. The first one is the transit, it's basically to take the money, take, take the money that we got surplus, sell it, put it back in transit program, which is what we require to go to state.
Let me, let me recommend this, why don't we pull, uh, the out and if we can approve by motion, the minutes, uh, tax fees, tax remunerations, we'll give you any of those. The, uh, two thousand one tax seven hundred and four, and the month ahead, one tax collection report, we can approve that with one motion if you would make your question. So move it, gentlemen, okay? We have a motion, we have a second, and that motion and a second to approve the consent agenda without it being removed, any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes, Lori, would you like to address anything in the budget amendments? Namely, the twenty, I guess twenty-eight, which is the adult dental.
Mr. Brightner's there, he could probably, to talk about this a bit.
Mr. Brightner, I recognize you, you're on.
Is those handouts?
Yes, emails, but also had one.
Twenty-seven, twenty-eight, we're looking at twenty-eight there. Just, 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 just for some background, and you may already know this, but, uh, Jim elaborate on Medicaid, thought settlement board actually came in much higher than we expected it to be. There's been a real need, as you all know, certainly on the health, the, the board, that, uh, we really need a better facility for adult dental, when you're going to build.
We just believe we can, we, we believe at least that helpful experience facility will do nothing but expand the amount of money they were bringing in. And, and it really is, I mean, you, you can even ask the person who's giving us the office, he'll tell you right away, if Doc Silverstein was here, that, that, that the dentist needs to get a bigger place, okay? So, not that he's trying to get rid of us, but he recognizes that for the traffic that we put through there, it's far too small.
The other, the other point I would make is that the money. The other, the other point I would make is that the money it earns through the health department and the Medicaid cost settlement has to be spent in the health department.
It has to be spent in the programs that are earned, which is the way that it's worded in the agreement that I have. But we, uh, we budgeted a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars last year on Medicaid cost settlement. Usually receive a little bit more than that. But we kind of had a windfall. They've changed the way they do the cost settlement. Now they sell individual counties. Before it was kind of a statewide aggregate and we got our eighty, our percentage of the eighty-five counties, uh, health departments in the state. This year we earned three hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars, uh, in Medicaid cost settlement, of which, uh, we've received, uh, about two hundred and fifty-two so far. The state holds ten percent until DMA reviews it a second time before they release that thirty-nine thousand. But the other day we received our first check of three hundred and fifty-seven, seven thirty-four. We've appropriated a hundred and forty-four thousand of that to last year's budgeted amount. And we, uh, asked that, uh, the difference, the two hundred and twelve thousand, eight thirty-five, be moved to this year's fund or to the fund balance. So that we can appropriate it into this year's budget, um, to be able to spend it on this project. And when we received thirty-nine thousand, we may be back to ask, depending on how much this is, because right now with basic cost estimates, the equipment alone is about a hundred and seventy thousand. That doesn't include any kind of facility renovation or anything like that that we're looking at. That's the request on the table.
No, I think that's a, that's, that lays it out really well. And I think we've got, we're very fortunate in adult dental. Kind of took a gamble on adult dental, if you remember on this board a little while back. And I'd just like to say that from our perspective on the health board, that that has paid off. We are, we're once again, uh, doing our thing in adult dental. We've got a lot of capacity there, I think, with the dentist we've got. If we can get him into the proper venue and the proper, uh, uh, spaces that he needs, I think he can really do a number for us in the, in the adult dental world and, and I'd be very much impressed.
So how long has he been needed to stay by? Have you got?
Well, I don't know. Uh, but he seems very happy here, uh, from my, Jim, you know more, you work on.
Yeah, one of our challenges is retention of a dentist here, retention of high dentists. A lot of that has to do with the space that we're in. And, uh, and I think that if we can get him out of the space that we're in, I mean, we've had three dentists and three high dentists since two thousand and seven, if that tells you anything. And every one of them has complained about the space. You can touch the ceiling like this in the room, in the space they're in. Um, there's not enough room around the chairs now to, to provide really good quality dental care. So they're operating on a one chair instead of two, so they don't utilize it so that they can provide that quality care. This will give him increased capacity and, uh, we're looking at a four-chair dental clinic is what we're trying to do. And, uh, and try and increase revenue. You know, you did take the gamble on us this year, you gave us fifty-four thousand dollars extra. Of which we didn't spend any of, and of which adult dental actually came out without the cost settlement, twelve thousand dollars in black.
So that's back in our dental fund?
So that, that twelve thousand dollar went back to the general fund.
The fifty-four one?
The fifty-four went back to the general fund as well. So we didn't spend any of that and, uh, and plus the additional twelve. And then how, plus the cost settlement, that, you know, costs that, we talked about cost settlement, we got three hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars. Of that three hundred and ninety-seven, dental is seventy percent. Seventy percent of that, two hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars of that cost settlement is just dental alone.
I think we make the spirit handle it.
I just have a vision about the space and I do about it, bro. What kind of lease you want to have, how long, because you do a dental officer, a lot of work has got to be done.
It, it will require renovation work. Um, we, in this, we probably, we won't have to hire an architect because the dental, uh, vendors, there's only really two.
Patterson and Henry.
Patterson and Henry Schein. And, uh, and we've actually had some preliminary conversations with both of those and it's, we, that's why we know it's around a hundred and seventy thousand for equipment. And we're talking about moving the existing equipment so that the costs that, beyond that hundred and seventy will be any renovation cost. The cost of actually moving the equipment that we currently have in the dental clinic up there and then any increase in rent. Right now we're paying seven hundred and fifty dollars a month, about twelve dollars a square foot. And we're trying to get significantly lower than that in the new space. Dental space is a commodity. And it is a long-term, you know, if we, if we go into a piece of property and renovate a piece of property, that's, whoever's got that piece of property. Even if we walked off and took our equipment with us, it's still set up for dental clinic.
And they'll be able to. Be used for nothing else.
Won't be able to use for anything else, but that is a good revenue source for a rather.
So that walk off, leave it there and be able to buy it.
So this is the Silverstein office?
We're in the basement of his office now. We're looking at other space outside of that. We've already looked, we've kind of gone around and looked at about eight different properties already. We, I, I have, Dr. Villier back there has, which is our dentist. And, uh, and we haven't, you know, we haven't decided on any one specific piece of property yet, but, um, we do have at least one really good one in mind. It's about two thousand square feet. We need between two thousand and twenty-one hundred square feet.
We have asked legal, just what's the account? And what if it doesn't?
Not at this point. We, uh, we haven't pursued that until this question amendment goes through. We haven't gone out to, we don't want to give anybody anything at this point.
This is where, if you want any in the right, in the right plot, so you'd be ready to do it and you're ready to do it.
I'll make a motion.
Uh, as part of, it'd be part of the consent agenda.
We just, both goes out of.
We, we want to do all, all the.
Oh, okay, okay, I'm sorry. I thought.
We did approve.
You want, that, that's what I said. You want, we want, okay, so we need to discuss the other way.
We don't.
Oh, I'm happy with them. I just, okay.
Just make a motion to approve the.
Late at night. I make a minute, we approve, we approve all the budget amendments, both the ones in here and the two that we have out there.
Second, we have a second. Mr. Tate. Second, yeah, just, I, I pulled out lead, it's entire, pulled out all the budget amendments so we can discuss.
Got it. I thought we only pulled out twenty-eight, twenty-nine.
No. Okay, that's all right. And, uh, motion had a second, any discussion?
Just, uh, if, if this board can do anything to make, you know, without, we can have all the best deals placed in the world, we don't have a dentist here. So I know you can't make them, it's like hiring psychologists and psychiatrists, we didn't have that rough, too. We can't make them stay, but, uh.
And I'd just like to say on behalf of, of Mr. Brock. We've shown pretty good faith with this particular dentist since he's been here. And I think he's asked for stuff and we've been very responsive. I think what you're saying was, yeah, if we can do anything else, Jimmy, please let us know, but I think right now we've, we've done a really nice job, both from the health.
I've never meant that you can force it, that, I believe that we have support.
He does have the support.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the budget amendments, see if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Brock. Uh, item number fourteen is a planning board. And we've pointed out, we've got, uh, we have two appointments we have currently that we need to make. And then we have one that is coming up. I believe it expires the end of October. Probably do that in, in October to be effective then, or do it's no longer to be effective retroactively, I'm not sure how that works. I, I would think we do it in October. With that said, we do have one, we need to make an appointment tonight. This would be to fill the, uh, I guess to fill the unexpired term. Is that what I suppose, uh, of our slate? This will be a shortened term. The one that we would appoint, uh, in October will be at full.
This'll be, this'll just finish out as a, three years.
So whoever we appoint to this, uh, would be able to serve another term after this. So you guys have seen the applications. We've had several of those. Do we have a, a recommendation, a suggestion, a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I want to jump off this one. Everybody else, I feel like it's, uh, appropriate, uh, even though there's some great people on here, but I hope all of them get a chance to serve on the planning board. Whenever I was offered the opportunity to serve with you gentlemen here, uh, we lost a seat, in my opinion, from the Highlands area. So I'd like to see that seat replaced. And we have a definitely a qualified applicant in the area, in the Stanley Mount area that has a background, not only in planning, though. Because of license contract. If you'd be an asset in the, uh, planning boards. I'd say I'll jump on this one, make the actual, appoint Bill Futral for the unexpired term.
We have a motion of a Mr., Mr. Tate, second by Mr. Cooper's, to appoint Bill Futral, uh, to finish the unexpired term. The Vouse label, which I say we sadly do that. So we recognize that tonight that is, again, his loss. His untimely passing has blown a lost discipline, he would have lost the planning board. We have a motion second to, to replace him with Bill Futral, who, as Jimmy pointed out, would represent the, uh, the Highlands area. Any discussion regarding?
Now, who, who else from Highlands is on that?
It would not be the Highlands.
I, I understand. That's, uh, John. Any other discussion regarding that motion? All in favor, see if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes unanimously and I would point out, and Jack, please go ahead and advertise that, uh, October, uh, I think it expires, if I'm not mistaken, the, the end of October, the first. So we'll go ahead and redsend our October meeting and that person that we appoint will be effective first November, that's correct. Uh, we do have, if there's nothing else to come from the board, we do have a closed session requested, uh, from our attorney and from manager to discuss matters related to location, expansion of industries or other businesses and also to consult with the attorney, uh, attorney of public, privilege. Uh, Mr. Attorney or Manager, would you, would you anticipate any action when you come back out?
I don't.
There is, there is a possibility of an announcement.
Possibility, and, and if there is an announcement in the press, please go make sure to call.
We, we have a, we have a, a new industry that's, well, it's not even probably coming, it's pretty much, pretty much a done deal. We may announce that tonight. Depending on what Mr. Jenkins tells us, the closed session has that.
Or you can call us in the morning.
Or you can call us in the morning. Or you guys have to, or you can call us in the deal.
He'll, he'll have some more. He'll have some, basically, probably better if, if that's, if that's by last night, call in the morning, Tommy will have some background information, it will be a lot of the information that you give.
And we, we are, we are thrilled with this, uh, announcement and happy that Tommy will be, mention that announcement on our, our behalf.
There, there is some potential that some actions will be taken, but that could be.
Feel free to stick around. We have a motion.
Was that a yes, Penny? Was that a yes, Penny? You'd be glad to stay and listen to your accounting business?
We have second, motion second, all in favor, going to close session, see if I'm saying aye. Red, you, you can help me up. Fixed it back in open session. Uh, we are thrilled tonight with, with, uh, let Tommy make the official.
He's going to wait a minute to get that hooked up?
It's good.
You're good? Uh, the Macon County Commissioners are thrilled to announce the addition of a new, uh, business, a new industry here to Macon County. As most of you know, the old, uh, Whitley, Whitley was using one of the cellties at the Macon County.
Business development.
Business development center, excuse me. And, uh, since they have vacated that, we've been searching for someone to fill that. That would, uh, meet the, the needs of employment for this area and so we have, we have achieved that. So Tommy Jenkins is our, uh, EDC director and we would turn it over to him at this time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman and, uh, Commission members. We're pleased to announce, thanks to your work in, in, uh, providing funds to renovate the EDC Business Development Center. After Whitley left, they were going to be able to fill that spot, part of that spot with a, the seventy-six hundred square foot spot will be occupied by a company called Harmony House Foods Incorporated. Uh, Harmony House Foods, uh, is involved in the dehydrated food repackaging and distribution, uh, business is what they do. They are a major player in that, in that field. Two thousand and seven, they were the Backpacker Magazine's product of the year. Uh, they've also.
Mention, mention who was the two thousand and six recipient of that? Was it not? And these guys were the two thousand and six?
Yeah, so, so, so they're, they're good, uh, they're, they're a fine company. Uh, they've got a, they've got accounts with, uh, such advertisers as the REI and other major brands. Do a lot of wholesale and retail business. Uh, they'll be doing, uh, the startup here, they'll be supplying, uh, start with five to seven full-time jobs. So we're real happy to have them. It's the kind of industry, old business, I think that we're looking forward to Macon County. It's clean, it fits in with the area with Appalachian Trail. All our outdoor activities and they're excited about being here and they're excited about growing, so we're glad to have them.
Also, the, what we're excited about too is the potential of future growth, uh, for this company. This is, this is a company that's, that's on the upswing.
Yes, sir. It started on their kitchen table several years ago, but they were actually repacking with this stuff at night, just the husband and wife, and they're growing from that to, uh, to where they are now. And, uh, we're, we're just pleased to have them. Uh, I'm for you tonight to approve, so we can approve the lease, uh, lease form.
In, in, in cooperation with Mr. Jenkins and the county manager, I have prepared a proposed resolution. The county commissioner declaring the, uh, property to be utilized by Harmony House Foods Incorporated, uh, to be surplus property. And approving a one-year lease of the same upon, uh, the terms set forth in that lease. If I may hand that to you.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney.
Mr. Jenkins has negotiated, uh, the rent terms on that and we may want to give those.
Okay, that term, that's a three dollars a foot on an annual rate.
Eighteen forty.
That comes eighteen forty, so.
Yeah, it's eight, one thousand eight hundred and forty dollars per month rent.
And that, if I could, Mr. Chairman, that also leaves us with an additional, uh, thirty-six hundred's, uh, feet of space for future use, so.
This is also been cleaned for it to be used.
And Jim, this document lays out that rent, it, it defines the space. It also defines it by, uh, by drawing, you know, the back.
The yellow is the space and the, uh, blue is the company area.
I would entertain a motion to approve these, or if you'd like to ask more questions of Mr. Jenkins, would the attorney that be appropriate?
We appreciate the work, Tom. We know that it's been going on for a while and we really appreciate, uh, you know, we thought it was just a pine to sky one time, but I think you brought it together. And we can't, Jim, we can't make, the, the second week Jack Orton was here, he and I went out to this building. And that was his first thing to do was to, we got to get this thing back what it's supposed to be. And, uh, so I think.
It's almost full.
Yes, right.
And let's, let's, let's mention as, as part of this, that this is the fifth. This is the fifth business that we've been able to assist in starting in that, uh, in that facility, in that, uh, for, for the purpose of generating.
And in the last sixty days, I've had four more, uh, out in terms of serious requires. So we could, we could be, uh, we could be past capacity.
And we're, so you might say we're on, we're on the bit of a roll.
Yes, sir. And it also, it's, it's also, you know, the way, the way we're going to have to grow business in the future, I think I've talked to government commissioners about this. We're going to do it organically. We're going to do it ourselves, you know? What we recruit's great. Uh, number one, we need to retain what we've got and grow it. Number two, we need to grow it organically. And number three, we need to go out.
And let, let's, Tom, let's go back to when, when we met in January and set goals, we, you told, we met with you and we talked about this whole thing about, uh, our, our top priority was to try to, uh, try to retain jobs and then, and then try to increase and improve industry and business and jobs for this area. And, uh, we've been able to do that. We're fortunate that we have. And, uh, as you said, and I think we said then, uh, a lot of the businesses that we're looking at are, are ones that are not your traditional, I guess, businesses this area. But, but they're businesses that are, as you say, are these, uh, for new generation businesses, that a lot of, uh, business generated through the internet, through high tech. And this, this is a perfect example of that.
Right, now the fiber out, the capability was, uh, the timing of that was.
And because we have such time, the Boston West, if you will.
We, we have our tables in place and, uh, we just got to take one step at a time to get.
Well, Mr. Chairman, if I get this correct, I'm sorry. No, no, go ahead.
I want to thank you very much for what you've done, because, uh, as we've said about this, I know of Harmony.
I want to thank you very much for what you've done, because, uh, as we've said about this, I know of Harmony House also, I know of Mountain House, which is one of the bigger food dehydrator companies for recreation purposes, people who can be camped out and hiking. And I think the cause of what our attachment with the Appalachian Trail is here, I think this is not only going to be good for the economic part of having a business here, but I think it's going to help center our tourism, and it's going to be an opportunity for people such as myself, and local advertisers, or local, uh, for local businesses such as our outfitter, to advertise their product also, and to help families to grow.
That's right.
You're gonna, you're gonna have a, uh, a community of that.
It's, it's going to be a good, Bill, I, I'd like to make a motion of...
I was getting ready to do that, but I'll go ahead.
We have, we have motion to approve the, uh, resolution and the lease. Can we do one motion? Certainly. Okay. We have motion and a second to approve the resolution and the lease. Uh, and this, again, designates the amount of rent and the space available to Harmony Home Foods Incorporated. And we'll mention, as far as discussion, this business is already established business moving here from Greenville, North Carolina, Pitt County. So we send our regrets to Pitt County, sorry they're losing it, we know some of the commissioners...
So they're, they're what we're discussing.
And so, brother, we're sending Brother Glenn our, our regrets. We've taken one of his bids.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, to thank you and the commission, uh, for backing the Business Development Center. I have foresight to do it, because I think in a lot of areas, uh, commission, the commissions wouldn't do it.
Well, and that, that's a good point, too, to, I think you need to make that clear. This is a business development area, this is not a place we're trying to get people to come in and put permanent businesses in there. As, as Ronnie said, Mr. Holton, very wise to look at that space and, and wasn't sure that's what we were doing out there. And so...
Well, I, I like to tell all our, I don't call them tenants, I call them clients, because we want to kick them out.
We want to kick them out as soon as we can.
They're successful, they can, so they got it too real, right, Tom?
That's right. So with motion, second, attorney, any discussion? All in favor of approving the, uh, resolution and the, uh, lease agreement, see if I can say aye?
Aye. Most of you turn to close session, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly.
All in favor? Under section two eight, medium four. We will leave, Mr. Jenkins, you grill him, however you'd like to, and we'll be available tomorrow or, or later, whatever.